Okay, well, it's six o'clock and we have a quorum. Um Jen Stacy is gonna be joining us a little bit later and Connor is going, joining us soon, so I'll just get started.
This meeting is being recorded.
Um, the meeting is being recorded as you just heard. Um, welcome to the June seventh, twenty twenty one Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom web conference. The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast ninety-eight and Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website, This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching this at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email mblanchard@eastern.ma.us or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board Member to say their name to ensure that we have a quorum, starting with you, Craig.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevens.
And I'm Dottie Full Genetti, and as mentioned before, Jen, uh Stacy is not here at the beginning of the meeting. So our first item on the agenda is an Arbor Day Foundation press release. Um, Eastern is named a twenty twenty Tree City USA community. So every year, um, we do, uh, uh, tree planting on behalf of Arbor Day. This year, they did something at the Trustees of Reservations and Jen Stacy was there on our behalf. I'm not sure if others were there from our, um, our board. Craig, were you there?
No, I didn't. I couldn't make it.
Okay, so we did get a, a letter, um, from the Arbor Day Foundation, um, congratulating us on our Tree City designation. And we got, there was a press release that I just wanna read one, um, paragraph that I think is important. It says, "If there was ever a time for trees, now is that time. Communities worldwide are facing issues with air quality, water resources, personal health and wellbeing, energy use, and protection from extreme heat and flooding. The Arbor Day Foundation recently launched the Time for Trees Initiative to address these issues with unprecedented goals of planting one hundred million trees in forests and communities and inspiring five million tree planters by twenty twenty-two. With Tree City USA recognition, Eastern has demonstrated a commitment to effective urban forest management and doing its part to help these challenges for Eastern residents now and in the future." And they did plant trees at the, uh, Trustees of Reservations, so, um, it's something that's kind of an overlooked thing. I never knew what a tree warden did or that we had one until I moved to Eastern and my neighbor across the street was the tree warden at that time. And he told me everything that I ever wanted to know about trees. So, um, it's really great that Eastern cares about that. It's very good for our environment and for the climate and reducing greenhouse gla- grass, greenhouse gases. So, um, thank you for that letter. So on to the one-day liquor licenses. Uh, the first one we have is the Eastern Lions Club. This is a, um, there are two one-day beer and wine li- liquor licenses for the Eastern Live at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall Music Events to be held on June tenth and July ninth at Oaks Ames Memorial Hall, Three Barrows Street, from seven PM to eleven PM. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for these events, and the recommendation is approval upon contingency, um, compliance with any COVID nineteen rules, regulations, and safety standards in place the day of the event. So, uh, do we, we do have Mark. Um, do we wanna transfer Mark in and have him just tell us a little bit about the event? And how people can, um, can get there if there's, uh, tickets?
Mark might not know he's on mute.
Mark, we can see your name, but we can't hear you.
There you are.
Hey guys.
In the flash.
How's it going?
Good to see you, Mark. We wanted to have you tell us a little bit about the, um, Eastern Live, uh, program. You're looking for a liquor license for June tenth and July ninth. What can you tell us about the fun that we'll be having that, those nights?
Uh, hopefully all you guys will be coming, uh, Thursday night. Um, we've been, uh, Eastern Live has been, uh, been a work in progress. It's been pretty much a virtual, um, we've been coming broadcasting through the brewery, um, since the beginning of February, every week. So we've been looking forward to, um, getting towards a live audience, uh, which we had last month at the hall, and that worked out really good. It was nice to see people. We were, we did, um, there were some restrictions at that time still in place, and we were very careful. Um, so we're looking forward to like the second big live event that we're having now and then applying for another one that would be pretty similar for the beginning of July.
That's great. People need tickets and how do they find out about it?
Um, they can check the Eastern Lions website. They could check our Eastern Lions Events Facebook page or Eastern Lions Facebook page too. Um, all that information is on there. Um, tickets are being, um, sold via donation to the Eastern Lions Club. All of the money that's raised is gonna be going back to the Eastern Lions Club and back to the community of Eastern, of which the Lions are a big part of. So, um, we're hoping that this becomes a really successful event that, um, you know, can become a fundraiser also.
Great. Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay, I would take a motion to, um, to award the one-day liquor licenses to the Eastern Lions Club as noted in the agenda.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger Lamb, back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Thanks, Mark, and, uh, good luck with your events.
Thank you. See you Thursday.
Okay.
Next, we have Stone Soup LLC doing business at Langwater Farm for their summer pizza series. Um, they're at two fifteen Washington Street, and, uh, the applicant is looking for a series of beer and wine liquor licenses for their summer pizza series to be held on June eighteenth with a rain date of June twenty-fifth, July twenty-third with a rain date of July thirtieth, and August twentieth with a rain date of August twenty-seventh, um, at Langwater Farms from four PM to eight thirty PM. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for these events, and there is a recommendation for approval contingent upon compliance with any COVID nineteen rules, regulations, and safety standards in place the day of the event. Um, I think I saw Kate. Oh, there she comes. Kate, we can see you, but you're on mute. There you are.
It looks like she's on an iPhone, and sometimes when you go to Zoom on an iPhone, you have to swipe over and tap to talk.
Or you can hit star six to unmute. Frank, same with you.
I, I'm, I'm unmuted.
There you go. Well, while Kate's figuring that out, um, Frank, do you wanna tell us a little bit about the, um, the summer pizza fest- festival?
Um, yeah, so that, um, Langwater Farm is, uh, gearing up for their summer pizza festival. And, um, as always, it's a beautiful time outdoors with, uh, Kevin's Pizza is fantastic. And I'm sure, um, the Shovel Town Beer will be excellent also, so. Uh, but it is Kevin's event, Kevin and Kate's event. Um, I'd be more than happy to talk to it, but I, I, I think, um, they probably have to talk to them.
Feel bad that Kate can't unmute. Um, Kate, if you can hear me and you can hit star six, I think that will get you off mute. Do you know if there needs to be tickets to this? Or last year, I think that, um, you, it was open to the public, but you had to pay for food and beverages there.
Of course, yeah, that's, uh, that's, I believe, the same approach this time, yeah.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, can you hear me now? Sorry.
Oh, I can hear you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, um, yeah, we're looking forward to that. We really missed out on doing, uh, all of the pizza nights last year, and it's a great community event. Everyone has a good time, so, uh, yeah, we're looking forward to doing them again this year.
Well, I think that's exciting. It's nice to see the, the buzz of activity at Langwater every day, you know, um, just a lot going on. So it's a really big part of the community, so thank you for, uh, for all that you're doing. You know, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, we're excited about it though, too. It's, uh, yeah, pick your own strawberries starting soon too, so it'll be great. Yeah, good year.
Any questions from the board?
We, uh, people need tickets? I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Uh, no, I, I was just commenting. Sounds like a really fun event, and like Dottie said, I'm looking forward to seeing all the activity. I love driving by or stopping in and seeing, you know, tons of people and little kids, and it's awesome. I love it.
Neat, thank you.
Kate, is there a, uh, tickets or do you just, you just show up and buy the food and?
Yep, yeah, you can just show up and, um, yeah, take a number and we call you up to make your pizza. Pizza takes about a minute to cook and, yeah.
Great. All right.
Forward to it.
Yeah, thanks.
If somebody would like to make a motion to, uh, award the, um, the liquor licenses as noted in the agenda to Stone Soup doing business at Langwater Farm?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Good luck to you on the event. Hopefully I'll get out to one of them. And thanks Frank, uh, for you and the Shovel Town Brewery for always being a great community partner as well. We really talk about this a lot, Mark does, on the Economic Development Council, that it's just so great to see businesses working together locally. Um, couldn't be better.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you guys.
All right, have a good night.
You too, bye-bye.
And the next one is Eastern Youth Baseball League Parents Night Out, Langwater Farm, two fifteen Washington Street. Um, applicant Danielle Schiffer from the Eastern Youth Baseball League has applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a parents' night out event to be held on June twenty-sixth at Langwater Farm from four PM to ten PM. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event. Again, um, the approval is contingent on compliance with any COVID nineteen rules, regulations, and safety standards in place the day of the event. And I'm not sure if Danielle is here. I don't see her.
Dottie, this is Michael. I just, uh, got an email from her that she's having trouble logging in, um, but I can't say I did speak with her, and this event, uh, is geared towards parents of the league, so they'll be emailing out and reaching out to the, their audience.
Okay, terrific. Any questions from the board?
No questions, but anything that is a parents' night out, I fully support.
Spoken like a real parrot.
Your kids are never too old for parents' night out, believe me. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to award that, uh, one-day, uh, beer and wine license?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Back to you, Craig. That's Barger.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
And Full Genetti, yes. Okay, next up, we have the Taxation Aid Committee. Connor, you wanna lead us with that?
Sure, so as the board may recall, uh, what feels like a, uh, long time ago, uh, in a galaxy, uh, far, far away, uh, in November of two thousand nineteen, as part of a special town meeting leading up to the, uh, debt exclusion authorization in order for the, uh, Land James Elementary School, uh, one of the things that the town, uh, did in response to hearing from some of our constituents was adopt, uh, a few chapters of Mass General Law that would enable the town to establish a taxation aid committee and set up a voluntary donation account, uh, along with the administrative procedures necessary to manage, uh, a tax relief fund. Uh, and that work, uh, has been, uh, going on, uh, throughout COVID, and we have reps from, uh, that committee, uh, here this evening, uh, to give an update to the board and the public on the status of their work.
Okay, great. So Cory and Andrew, welcome tonight. Thank you for being here.
Uh, thank you for having us. Uh, can you guys hear me all right?
We can.
Excellent. Um, so I'll start off. We just, as a committee, have been working the past couple months on, um, guidelines and, uh, application for, um, the Taxation Aid Committee and the Taxation Aid Fund. And, um, we are, as a group, ready to move forward with fundraising. So we, uh, put this item on the agenda to make you guys aware of what we've done so far before we begin, um, collecting funds. Um, so I asked, uh, Michael to send out a copy of the application that has the, the guidelines on it, as well as a flyer. Um, our hope is to include this flyer with the, um, tax bills that are, the real estate tax bills that are going, going to go out in July. Um, and then we will probably do that, uh, subsequent times throughout the year. And that'll hopefully be our major mode of, of raising funds. Um, at the moment, we can only take, um, checks. Um, we're working on getting online payment set up. Uh, the other thing that we distributed to you guys was a copy of the application, so we spent some time going through, um, different guidelines as far as, um, requirements, um, that people would have to meet in order to, uh, be eligible for this fund. So, um, just a brief overview of that, uh, you know, the three major requirements that we have. You have to be a resident of the town of Eastern for at least one year. The, um, we, uh, set the elderly, you have to be, uh, in order to qualify as elderly. We set that at, uh, sixty years of age. Um, and then the last part was the median income. Um, so for the median income amount, we use eighty percent of area, area median income, and that'll be our cap. Um, so you can see those amounts listed, um, per mem- you know, members of family. It goes up each, each step. So I kinda wanted to come to you guys and, or we did as a committee, um, and hear any feedback you may have, uh, any concerns or any questions before we moved forward.
Okay, I don't recall seeing the flyer to that, and I don't see it in the packet. Am I missing?
Okay. Am I allowed to share my screen? Cause I can share it for you. And I, I think, uh, Michael has it to send around as well.
Michael forwarded it to everyone about an hour before the meeting.
Oh, no wonder I didn't see it. Okay. All right, any, any?
Sharing capability.
Garrett, Michael, so we can see it?
Yeah, A- Andrew can share his screen now.
Okay, all right.
Well, let me try and do that. All right, can you see my screen?
Yep, we can.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, so this is a copy of the flyer. It's gonna be about a third of a, the size of a, a page, and, uh, it'll be included with the tax bills. It's pretty straightforward. There's just an explanation, um, of what the committee is and what the funds will be used for, as well as, uh, a checkbox and instructions to include a separate check. Uh, if someone does however, not include a separate check, we're not encouraging that, but we will be able, uh, Linda's office will be able to, uh, post that check. Uh, the other document I wanna show you here, this is a little more lengthy. Um, maybe I can... Can you see?
Information is, is available on the, uh, Taxation Aid Committee portion on the website as well. It's been updated to include the FY twenty-one, um, application, so.
Okay, yeah, Cory's right. Uh, can you see the application now or do you still see the flyer?
Still see the flyer.
Okay, one second.
On the flyer, I would just make a recommendation that you include the town hall's address of where to mail the check to, because although it may seem obvious to us, if people have to look back or click on the link to get the address, it'll be an extra step.
I think, but it does indicate that, that you, you can send it into the, with your tax payment.
Yeah, that, that's the general idea, but we can, we can certainly add an, add an address as well.
Yeah. If people have escrow, um, they won't
Oh, yeah, you're right.
necessarily see that, and this could be something that could be shared.
Sorry, I'm having troubles sharing the other documents.
If you un, if you unshare your screen and then re-start it again, that might work.
Yeah, I'm...
That's okay. There's nothing like being under pressure when you're on camera trying to use technology. That's never happened to us before.
I'm sure. Uh, yeah, I'm having some issues here.
That's okay. You can just, if you tell it, that's the talk about the DJ.
The second I gave up, it started working, so. Here's a, here's a copy of the application. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so there's a, a lot of language in here, um... Okay, can you still see it? It says it's not?
No, we can't see it now.
Nothing's easy.
There it is.
There it is.
Sorry about that. So there's, there's, uh, um, a lot of information in here, but like I said, the, the highlights, and feel free to review it on your own time and, and send Cory or I or anybody in the committee any input you have. But, um, the major highlights are, are the, uh, definition of elderly at sixty years or older. And then down here, you can see the eighty percent area median income is the figure that we used, uh, to determine low-income eligibility. So, um, a household of one would be capped at fifty-five, uh, nine fifty, uh, two at sixty-three, nine fifty, and so on and so forth. Um, and then down below, we will be requiring that people provide copies of their income tax return so that we can verify the income. And there is some information down below here, um, that they would enter.
So how will you do that? We'll get, you'll collect a certain amount of money, and then you're gonna have a certain amount of people that want, you know, some assistance. Are you just gonna take the money and divide it by the people that ask? Like, how do you, is, what's the, the cap on the amounts that you'll be able to grant people?
So I believe we would only be capped, um, by our funding. Um, and we're kind of curious to see how it's going to go. Um, I think our hope would be to help as many people as possible. Um, so we'll kind of realize, hopefully have a better idea once money starts coming in. Um, but, um, people will apply using this form, and then the, the committee will, um, review their applications and decide who's eligible, as well as the, um, the amount that they'll receive.
Andrew, is, this is Mr. Barger. Um, have you checked with any other towns that do this, sort of determine if they've had some history to see what kind of response they get?
Uh, so we've checked with other, some members have checked with other, um, towns on different items, um, but not specifically on how much, uh, money they're, they receive. I think that would probably vary greatly based on what town you speak with.
Right, I was thinking more about if towns that are, that are, um, similar to Eastern in size and population, et cetera. I don't know how many towns are actually doing this.
There's not a lot of towns actually doing this. There are probably a handful, and I know that, that I did look into that. I know that Revere is one of them. Um, Tom Broussard had mentioned them as an example, and they said it, it was successful, but it takes a little while to get started.
I, I was just gonna say that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have grandiose expectations in year one or even year two. Um, I think it'll take a while for people to realize this exists and what it is and trust it to also, to be honest. Um, but I do have a question, uh, and you know, Dottie had brought up escrow. A lot of people have paid their taxes, uh, you know, through their mortgage lender, um, that's all escrowed. Uh, how are those, how are we getting to those people? Are we getting to them any other way or is it when we send out the receipt for their tax bill? Cause that, that represents a lot of people.
Right, yep. So our, our hope is that this would just be the start and that we would include this on, on other, other, other billings as well. Um, this is just the first... Sorry?
Is it, well, you don't get a tax bill when you, when it gets paid by your mortgage lender. You get kind of a receipt.
No, you do get a tax bill.
I get a tax bill.
You get a tax bill, but, but what I was saying is that if my, i- if my taxes get paid by my bank, then I, and I separate those, I might not, you know, I might not be saving all the papers. That's why I just thought to put the address on there, because if you put that aside and say, "I'll pay it later."
And I think that's a great idea. So I think, um, and this is Cory, by the way, um, I think taking this a step further going forward will, will be including on, uh, their utility bills. Um, so that would hopefully catch some of those folks that are escrow taxed. Uh, and we also hope to enable an online donation system, which could also catch those escrow folks as well. Um, you know, I, and I, I, I think, you know, the flyers are also used as a, an outreach tool as well. Um, so maybe you do see it on your receipt that you get from your taxes paid by your escrow account. Um, and I agree with you, Dottie. I, same thing, my, my taxes are escrowed as well. Um, and, but I still would receive, I still receive the mailing, and sometimes I throw it to the side, cause I know it's paid. Um, but maybe it catches, you know, maybe it catches half of those folks. Um, but we, you know, we plan to engage in, in quite a bit of outreach in, you know, as many methods as we can, so we're hoping that's just the start of it. So this is an evolving and developing process, and this is year one. So I think every, you guys, sound, sounds like you're heading in, in a great direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions, Jamie?
I can find the mute button. Uh, no, it sounds, uh, it sounds great.
I think this is fabulous. You know, when we were looking at, um, an override for the schools and our older people in the community came and supported that overwhelmingly. And Tom and Mark had, uh, both come forward with the idea of was there a way to offer more tax relief for the citizens? And, you know, part of that was, um, you know, being prompted just in generally by costs rising for everyone, but it was also thinking about the new school and as a way to say thank you to the people in our community that do vote to, um, to do things like build a new school for little kids. So, um, I hope people will, in the community will think about that and be generous, um, with their, their offerings, even if it's something as small as, you know, ten or twenty dollars. It can add up quickly when you have a town of twenty-five thousand people, so. Um, I, I'm really happy to see this move forward and, and thank you, uh, Andrew and your committee for all your work and dedication to this, and, and Cory and, uh, Linda for your roles in leading this forward. I'm dying to see how this works out. It's, it's really very exciting.
Thank you. We're, we're anxious too, and, and it really was a, a, a team effort to get everything together thus far. And I, I think we have a great group together, so I think the town will be well-served.
So I'm just looking, where's my agenda? We don't need to take a vote on this. This was just an update, so.
Yeah, yeah, and if, if you guys have any feedback, um, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or Cory or any of the other members and, and, um, you know, we'll get back to you as soon as we can.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Nice to see you all tonight.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion and vote authorizing the town of Eastern to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, otherwise known as PACE Massachusetts. So, um, Mark?
Yeah, so, um, do you want me to just kinda introduce Stephanie and Dan and? Um, all right, so this, this is a program, um, we, we call it PACE, uh, standing pretty much on the agenda at the Economic Development Council, uh, for the past, let's say about eight months. Uh, we've combed through this, um, and really, uh, asked a lot of questions. And at the end of it, uh, Stephanie and Dan have, uh, put together a presentation. Dan is, uh, Vice Chair of Economic Development Council. Stephanie is obviously is the town planner. Everybody knows Stephanie. Um, and they're gonna present this, uh, this program that will, uh, that stands a chance to economically benefit, uh, businesses in the community. And anytime there's an opportunity for economic, uh, benefit development, I'm all in. So, guys, uh, feel free to take it away.
Okay, um, can I share my screen? I, we have a presentation to go along with the discussion.
So Stephanie, as you're bringing that up, I'll kinda kick things off. One, it's great to see everybody. Um, a lot of exciting things going on in town between hearing about a parents' night out and pizza and beer, and then the great things that we're doing to, you know, help our, help our community grow and, uh, work together. It's just, it's really exciting, so, um, I'm hoping to, to do a, a few things here. One is give a little background on Mass Development. Who's the administrator of the program? You know, kinda what Mark said, the-
You know, kind of what Mark said, the segue, what led to PACE being, uh, introduced to the Select Board tonight in, in hopes of its adoption and then what it may mean for the community moving forward. So, um, by the way, History Mass Development was founded about twenty-one years ago, it's, its sole purpose in life is to, uh, empower industry across Massachusetts so it can, put our businesses, our manufacturers, our builders, our, 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 our business community in, in the highest, uh, give it, the, the most competitive advantage it can have against, you know, the region, other states and really attract businesses, to Massachusetts and it does that in a whole host of different ways, they have, a, a, a countless amount of programs that are available, one for instance is like, um, say Northeastern Manufacturing wanted to, you know, buy some equipment to manufacture something for one of its customers, it could go to Mass Development, and work with its lender to get cost competitive financing so it can purchase the equipment, and oftentimes create and retain jobs, so they have a lot of programs that are just de facto available to the business community. Its southeastern, uh, Massachusetts office is located in Fall River. I'd highly suggest anyone that's in a, in a, in a business here in, in Massachusetts that's looking to make a business decision on to, you know, invest in its property, invest in its buildings, invest in different programs to give Mass Development a call and see what programs may, may help. What makes PACE unique, and PACE has been around for a long time, it's been adopted by many states, many communities within those states and in Massachusetts, we've got, you know, north of forty communities that have adopted this particular program. Uh, by nature of the program itself, um, it requires local board approval, so whether it's a city council, a select board like we have here in Easton, it requires local adoption, which is, really unique when it comes to the programs that are deployed by Mass Development in particular. But what's great about it is that you have Mass Development as the administrator of this program, so as, communities like Brockton and Yarmouth and all these other communities adopt it, there's a, infrastructure in place to support the business community, support the, the lenders to kind of, put the right people around the table to make the program work. And what it means for Easton in terms of economic development, it's, it's not the silver bullet, it's a tool in the tool belt. It's an important tool in the tool belt that when we're competing with other communities within Massachusetts, that may have adopted a program such as PACE, we can also say to those, those business owners, oh, by the way, do you know this program's available? The utilization within Easton, I think is gonna be, uh, limited, given the, the financial capacities that, that Stephanie's gonna go through. But what's nice about this, and I, I'm really proud of the Economic Development Council for taking this up, is that it's, we're leading, we're letting the business community know that there's a tool in the tool belt, available to them, that the city, the town hopefully adopts and, it's at their discretion whether or not they want to utilize it, now when it comes to the Ts and Cs, you know, I'll, I'll support Stephanie as best I can through the, through the presentation, but it's a, it, it's a solid program, um, it's being utilized nationwide. It's not unique to Easton, what's unique is that it requires the local adoption to move it forward, so. Excited to, to go through it with Stephanie, um. Any questions, comments, concerns, hopefully we can address them tonight to move this forward, but if not, we'll certainly work together to, to get those answers, so. That said, Stephanie?
So, um, the PACE program and PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. Um, as Dan alluded to, it's a funding mechanism that provides loans, to owners of commercial, industrial, nonprofit and multifamily properties, for energy efficiency improvement projects on that property. Um, the program's intended to incentivize those owners to make investments that really result in significant and measurable energy efficiencies. As Dan mentioned, it's a cooperative effort between Mass Development, who administers the program, um, selected capital lenders who will actually provide the funding and the capital, the property owners who are making the investments in their properties, and then the town who acts, um, you know, in a way that we collect the loan payments as a betterment assessment, through the municipal tax collection process. So, some of the eligible projects, just real quickly, energy efficiencies like upgraded HVAC systems, new, um, lighting that is more energy efficient, renewable energy sources like, um, solar panels, geothermal, and, um, bringing existing gas line extensions to properties so that they can convert to gas maybe from another method of heating like, oil or electric. Some of the key elements of the program, it's a maximum twenty-year financing term. The energy savings that are appreciated by the improvements must exceed the cost of those improvements. So it really has to be, um, a, a meaningful investment and meaningful improvements. As Dan mentioned, the funding, the capital is be, being provided by third-party financial institutions. And Mass Development is working to identify who those capital, um, funders will be. I've highlighted the role of the municipality on this slide. Basically, the way it works, the town agrees by opting into the program to, when there is going to be a PACE loan made, to levy a PACE betterment assessment, very similar to, um, infrastructure betterment assessments and in Easton right now, that, um, equates or is similar to the sewer betterments in the districts that were recently, improved by bringing in sewer collection systems. So the, the base, PACE payment repayment is actually done through a betterment assessment. The town records a PACE lien against the property and assigns it to Mass Development. And it's important to mention at this point that the PACE lien is subordinate to any tax lien that may be assessed against the property in the future. And it is superior to any, um, a mortgager. Um, if there's a mortgage holder on the property, they must agree to a subordinate position to the PACE betterment. So that the PACE betterment would, um, receive priority over a mortgage and, it would be, um, again, as I said, inferior to, subordinate to the, any tax lien. It's billed through the property tax billing system. The town receives payments from the property owner, and then remits those payments back to Mass Development who forwards them along to the capital funder. Um, we've reviewed this process with the town accountant, the, uh, town treasurer and the town assessor, and gone through it and they have expressed a willingness to support the program. Um, another thing to know about PACE assessments, they cannot be accelerated, so, um, they can't be called in, they continue, and they continue to run with the land through the means of the lien.
And, and that's a really important point, um, Stephanie, if you don't mind, so, one of the bottlenecks for property owners, um, the real estate community is the rate of return on any investment that they make in any property they own, right? So when you talk about boilers and mechanical equipment and roofs and whatnot, the ROI typically is a lot more than, you know, ten to fifteen years, which more often times than not, causes a, a, a lack of investment because usually they're looking for a two to three-year payback. And that's just a high level example. What's nice about this particular program is that if I'm a property owner in Easton, and I've got a building that I may plan on flipping in a couple of years, but I don't want to make that level in, of investment because, it's gonna take away my leverage against that property. The benefit of using this PACE program, it's that it's transferable to the property. So if you own and operate a building, and you've got to take out a half a million dollar loan to make a, a bunch of improvements on a building, that loan, that betterment stays with the property and it doesn't go, transfer from one owner to another. So I, I guess in, in layman's terms, which I need to hear from the people that I talk to that leverage this thing, is that it makes the transaction much smoother and it makes the probability that many of these property owners will invest in those buildings and help, you know, enhance and drive a better value in, in terms, we'd hope, you know, a, 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 a strong lease base or whoever their tenants may be, will have a better building product to, to, to live and work within, so. Sorry, got excited.
Thank, thank you for adding that, that, that's really helpful and I think, uh, Dan's covered some of the benefits to the property owner. Um, that also translates to benefits for the municipality because those investments, even if it's someone who's planning on selling the property, they increase the value of the property by making these investments, by making the, uh, either the building or the property itself, um, you could have solar panels, um, standalone units that would make it, um, the operation of the property more energy efficient and it makes it more attractive to future buyers. Also, by in, being able to make that investment in the property and help reduce energy costs, which in turn should reduce operating costs. It may help businesses to stay in Easton, um, as opposed to look for another location where energy costs might be lower. And I, I don't, I think you've covered pretty much the, uh, benefits to the owner. And again, for the lenders, it's a ru- reduced credit risk because of the lien in the betterment assessment, the fact that it runs with the land. Dan talked about already about who's participating of the forty-three communities, so, uh, just a little bit of, of background because, that forty-three communities who have, um, already voted to participate in the program, reached that number pretty exponentially. The pro, um, the legislation that allows this program was enacted, um, through a bill by Governor Baker back in two thousand sixteen. And it took a couple of years for Mass Development to, um, really define the program and how the program would work. And once they started sharing, um, the information with the different communities, the number of communities that signed on, has increased, as I said, exponentially, I think a few had signed on probably just before COVID. And now it's up to forty-three in just over a year. So, uh, again, what are the next steps to Easton's participation? Um, the Economic Development Council, as Dan said, really feels that this is an important program to have as a tool that reinforces, um, Easton's support to both existing businesses and to attract new businesses. The current threshold for the PACE eligible projects is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which really makes the program better suited for, um, high, for businesses with high energy consumption and that would, for existing businesses that would like to stay in Easton. Or if a business is looking at purchasing a property in Easton and maybe taking advantage of the program, again, I'm making that long-term investment. I, it is kind of, and to note that if it's, if the program's successful, that threshold may be lowered, but out of the gates, we really don't think we're going to, um, be overloaded with, uh, requests to participate in the program immediately. So the council's asking the Select Board to vote to participate in the program. I have included in your packet the, uh, recommended language for the vote to adopt, as well as a copy of the agreement that Easton would need to enter into with Mass Development. It's been my suggestion in the more detailed outline of all the steps that, the town would need to take to implement the program, that the agreement with Mass Development be reviewed by council, um, and, and approved or, or modified as necessary. And Mark?
So if, if I could, um, if I could just wrap it up before, you know, there are questions, um, or we go discuss and go back and forth, I just wanna, it's, it's a, it's an additional tool for businesses that we didn't have before. And, uh, the most important part is there's zero risk to Easton. Easton runs, there's no risk in, in, in offering this. Uh, if business does not participate, if no business participates at all, then nothing happens, there's no work on behalf of Easton. So, you know, it didn't, it didn't take off. But if, if there is participation, uh, and Easton has to do minimal work, uh, which we vetted out and we can handle, uh, then what that means is, uh, a business is benefiting and therefore they're suppo- supporting our local economy, you know, even greater. So, uh, no risk, uh, if there is participation rates. Um, but the town is not on the hook for anything if, if there is not participation. So for me, it was just very simple, um, additional tool, no risk, I'm in.
Yeah, the thought of, of you, Mark, and, and Stephanie and Dottie and Craig and, and Connor going out there and be able to say, yeah, no, we've adopted PACE and we're aware of it and, oh, by the way, do you know that Mass Development also has sixty other different programs that you may wanna, actually reach out to Joe Grivers at Fall River and have a conversation with them about your business and how Mass Development can support them? It, it's a, it's a, it's a good tool, it's not gonna be the silver bullet for the town, but, um, being able to keep Easton competitive and differentiate ourselves or, you know, equalize ourselves, um, on particular programs, it's, um, it's a good thing.
Do you have any questions?
Just a, a comment that this came up when I was a member of the Green Communities Committee. And, um, people were, were excited about the possibilities. And that was, you know, within the last year or so that, uh, that actually was part of the agenda in several meetings of the Green Communities Committee. So I'm very excited to see this possibility come before the Select Board and I really appreciate, uh, Mark's enthusiasm and Dan, it's good to see you and thank you for, uh, for your presentation as, as well as Stephanie, thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and Craig, if I just could add to that, um, I mean, that's another benefit of the program and certainly an intended goal is to help, reduce, um, the overall carbon emissions, um, in, in the state, which benefits the community at large as well. Jamie, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I had highlighted one and then I think you guys pretty sufficiently covered it, so Dan and Stephanie, thank you both, but it was, the fact that, um, you know, I, I would be curious, I know it's so early and, and the adoption's been so quick with these other communities, but, I'm curious how some of the mortgage holders, um, there is a benefit, like you said, that there's not a negative to them, but they do have to take a backseat when it comes to, um, you know, the lien processes that, I don't know, have we, we have any information on that yet, if mortgage, uh, you know, lenders are, uh, agreeable to this, yeah, or if they're hesitant, have you heard anything either way?
So Jamie, I've asked that question of our contact at Mass Development, um, a, a, a couple of times and a couple of times just to hear the answer again. And it's felt that, um, they won't have a problem doing that because they, because of the tax lien and it's, it, it, that it's, where it's kind of located, that they feel that the property owner will go in and, um, that, the mortgage company will go in and make the, um, make the, loan whole or, um, I'm not gonna use the right term, but, get it back in good order and take care of it to protect their property. Because they do subordinate position that the subordinate, the subordination actually will tend to make the mortgage holder act faster.
And, and, and Jamie, I, I would, thanks for the question, by the way, because it's a great question. Uh, Mass Development as a whole has a deep bench of, of financial partners that it works with, you know, Eastern Bank, JP, First Republic, there's a, there's a high level of engagement on, in a number of different programs within Mass Development. And there are also lenders that focus strictly on energy efficiency and financing, energy efficiency projects that are heavily engaged, this is a multi-billion dollar industry nationally. It, you know, so, I know with Easton, the, the probability of, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus projects, you know, we're gonna see as time, time goes, but the, the market's pretty sophisticated and, and understands the programs and, and policies and procedures with this, and Mass Development also has a pretty, pretty solid bench of financial partners across the board.
Great, thank you both.
So I would just say, you know, as it was mentioned before, this program's been around for a while, Dan, uh, Smith actually brought this before the Economic Development Council back in like two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So we have been talking about it for a while, um, when it came before this version of the Economic Development Council, it's almost one of those things like, what's the catch, right? So, um, the town doesn't make any money off this, it's, it's a, an administrative thing. We were concerned about, you know, how much work was this gonna be put on to our town employees, but, you know, like you've heard, this probably only fits a couple of businesses, so it's not gonna- But, you know, like you've heard, this probably only fits a couple of businesses, so it's not gonna be overly burdensome. And there's no, nobody's forcing anyone to enter into it. So if a business wants to do it, they see a value in it, you know, there's an opportunity. But the Economic Development Council now has been working on this and, and investigating every possible scenario of what, you know, what could happen, what other communities are doing. And it's been, it's really been going on for, I want to say like a year, real heavy study. So we've, we've looked at every, every angle on this. And, and the end result was what we thought in the beginning. This is a really, really good opportunity for businesses in Easton that can take advantage of it. So I support it and really thank you, Dan, for continuing to champion this. As you've said, Mass Development is a great partner in many other ways besides, so they're a good organization for the Economic Development Council to know and for our businesses. So they do come to, they've come to our roundtables and different events that we've had. They're a, a good partner.
And it's just, I, I gotta say, this wouldn't be an option for businesses in town if it weren't for Dan bringing it to the table. So, thank you, Dan.
You're too generous, Mark. I did start my career at Mass Development, though. It was the best, you know, couple of years of my life professionally. Don't tell my boss that now, but love it. It's a great, it's a great team. It really is.
We do have a motion in the packet. It sounds like we're all on board. Craig, do you have that handy?
Absolutely do. A move to adopt the vote authorizing the town of Easton to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts, as written and incorporate the text of the vote of the Select Board into the minutes of this meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you so much. Stephanie, I thought you were supposed to be on vacation this week, so.
I am. There are kids upstairs running around.
Where are you?
Dreaming. I'm in Vermont, been mountain biking for the last four days.
We appreciate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great night, everybody.
So item six, a discussion and vote to approve the issuance of other details of the bond anticipation note dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one and to sign related closing documents.
Sure. So while Linda and Wendy are moved into the panel, this is a bond anticipation sale that the two of them can speak to the details of what those notes are for in the short term, leading up to permanent financing. We've also included in the board's packet a copy of a press release from Moody's on our short-term credit rating, which is again, been reaffirmed at a MIG one, which is the highest you can get. And we anticipate a bond rating when we go for bond issuance later this year. But we had our Moody's Investors Call shortly after town meeting and the feedback was quite favorable about the town's fiscal position. So I just wanted to draw board's attention to that press release before turning it over to Linda to walk us through her memo and this ban.
Thanks.
How's it going?
Oh, Linda?
So I, there should be a memo in your packet. This is our annual, well, bond anticipation note. We, we generally have two borrowings each year. One at about this time of the year is just for temporary financing. And then late in the summer, we'll have another borrowing of permanent financing as well as perhaps some more temporary financing. But at this stage of the year, we're trying to pay for some capital expenses that we've expended money on over the year. Generally speaking, there's usually, or more usually, there are a lot of the equipment purchases included here. This year is a little bit bigger because we have a couple of really big projects going on. For the newer members of the board in municipal finance, you have temporarily, or I'm sorry, when you have permanent financing, you have to spend the money within a certain amount of time. Otherwise, you incur penalties because these are tax-exempt bonds. So the IRS doesn't want you holding money, you know, permanently financing a project, holding the money for more than a certain amount of time and then gaining the interest on that. Despite the fact that interest isn't really an issue, the rule is still there. So instead of permanently financing your big projects all at once, you borrow in increments and you do temporary financing. And this is one type of temporary financing, the bond anticipation note or the ban. And then this is gonna be good for one year. After one year, we either pay it off, roll it over, or make it permanent. So like I said, this is a little bit bigger than normal because we do have a couple of really big projects going on in town, including the water mains and the school project, which is going to happen very quickly. But nevertheless, we need a little bit of money right now. So on June second, the notes were put up for bid. We had seven bidders, which I thought was really great. The coupon rates ranged in between one point two five percent or one point oh five percent and two percent, which is good, but the bidders also offered premiums, which reduces our interest cost. So our net interest cost on this, on the winning bid is point seven nine percent, which continues a marked downward trend in the interest rates. Go ahead, Connor.
I thought that was last year. I thought this year it's zero point one eight.
Sorry, did I, sorry.
I know, it's so low, it's easy to miss, but.
Point one eight seven, yes, point one eight seven. And last year was point seven nine. Sorry about that. Thanks for catching that. But, you know, you would have thought that point seven nine was low enough, but the, the interest rates are still low. And that's reflected there in the, not only the low coupon rates, but also the premiums offered on top of what we need, which is the twelve million dollars. As Connor touched on, this short-term borrowing got a rating from Moody's of the MIG one. The ratings are MIG one, two, three, and four. This is the most favorable rating that a town could get. And later on in the summer, we will get another rating on our long-term financing. And we do expect that to be very healthy as well. And that's about it. I would ask that we vote on these, to accept these. Do you have the signature pages for the, the actual votes that we'd be taking?
Great. Any questions from the board?
Just a quick question about the water main replacement. Is that in addition to what the feds are paying for on Depot Street, Connor?
Yes, so Depot Street has a couple of funding buckets, including appropriation from town meeting for water.
I do have, it's kind of a comment slash question. I think this is fantastic. But, you know, we, we always glance over how our ratings are so good. And I, I'd like, or either Wendy or Linda or Connor, to tell the people at home, why, how does a town have ratings that are, that are so good? I, I want people to know the work that goes into making that happen.
So, so what for ratings, it's, it's basically the institutional equivalent of a credit score, right? It, it, it's putting a sticker on our credit worthiness for the market to make decisions on what kind of risk it is to purchase our bonds, which is reflected in the interest rates we get. So having a good credit rating is not the biggest ticket item, to your point, Mark. But it's super important to, to make a, an allegory to personal finance. It's the difference between borrowing a mortgage with an eight hundred credit score or a six fifty or a six hundred, right? Which can be substantial over the life of these borrowers, particularly when you're talking seven and eight-figure numbers. So there's a variety of factors that contribute to a community's bond rating. Some are within our direct control, some are not. Some of the ones that are outside of our direct control are things like the community wealth profile, right? So they look at the regional economy, the, you know, income statistics for folks who live in the area. Almost as a proxy for looking at what is the financial health of the tax base, right? Because the tax base is going to make up some assessments by Moody's or credit raters on, you know, what's the likelihood on people falling behind on bills and things like that. And so they can look at our year-over-year collections along with regional economic data and feel relatively confident that we're gonna collect to a very high degree, which we do in Easton. Then they look at other aspects of management. Basically, they look at the town's management from a financial perspective. And there's a variety of different factors that they look at. And Wendy and Lindell certainly missed some, please hop in as I do. But some big-ticket ones that they look at are your reserve position and whether or not you have adequate financial reserves on hand for your operating position, as well as whether or not you have clear and coherent fiscal policies adopted at the highest level, either administratively through my office or at a board, a select board policy level, which we do. Things like a fund balance policy and financial management guidelines that set clear, understandable standards for the fiduciary management of the town. That, you know, again, it conveys a certain level of professionalization, a certain level of seriousness and strategic planning of the town's finances, which, you know, our, our operating budget is nearing one hundred million dollars. So they want to make sure that people making those decisions, both in offices like mine, but also at the elected level, are committed to shrewd financial management. So they look at things like your financial management policies, your fund balances. Then they also look at your spending. They want to understand what your year-over-year capital planning looks like. First of all, they want to see that you have a actual capital plan. Not every community has a capital plan. For some communities, the capital plan is to go to town meeting and see what comes out. So they like to see in communities like Easton, where again, it's not just a, a high level of professionalization from the staff. There's a commitment by the voters through the Select Board, through town meeting, through things like having bylaws, like a capital planning bylaw in Easton, right? So that has a lot more institutional staying power. So that way, if I win the lottery and I disappear, Moody's has good reason to think that the capital planning of Easton's gonna probably look pretty similar with the next person because we have a bylaw that speaks to some very specific qualitative and quantitative standards that would be used for it. So they look for things like stability in your policies and your bylaws. And then they look on whether or not you're actually meeting your goals and doing what your policies say, right? So we can all kind of adopt policies and checkboxes and say, well, we did that, and then run our stabilization fund into the ground. They want to see that you're actually making good on it. And we are here. They know that. And they, they've taken notice of that, particularly during COVID. Our financial position, although we had a very difficult budget in fiscal twenty-one, you know, the, the conversation after this town meeting would be investing with Moody's Investment Services was strangely positive of talking about here are the areas where we're pivoting and recovering and making smart investments in things like PFAS mitigation. And they do actually care about environmental mitigation. These ratings agencies ask about how seriously you take climate change, right? Because when you kind of remove the politicization of that, sort of like, you know, the Department of Defense never denies that climate change is real, right? Neither does Moody's. They know. And so they like to see that you're an MVP community like Easton. So all the different things that we do here, through the planning department, securing grants, through the Select Board, adopting financial policies, through environmental committees, leveraging climate preparedness, through town meeting, adopting, you know, well-funded budgets that are thoughtfully crafted. All of those things are positives for your bond rating, all of which translates to you being able to get really advantageous borrowing rates like zero point one on your, your bands and hopefully continuing to get good rates on our bonds. So those are, that's kind of a handful of things that Easton does that puts us in, in, in a good light with ratings agencies. And in the long run, saves us tremendous amounts of money on interest.
Thank you. That was extremely thorough. And I just wanted the people at home to know all the work that you guys do that keeps us there with those outstanding ratings that allow us lower rates and good financial condition.
Sure, thank you.
Jamie?
Yes, and being recognized as a community with high excellence and, you know, budget, you know, annual budget, you know, work. So you, you guys, it is, it's a, it's a big pat on the back of, of this team. You know, Wendy, Connor, Michael, everybody. So thank you very much. It's, it's a big deal.
And let's not forget town meeting voters because they're the ones who vote to enact these policies. So we, we bring them forward, but the whole community really participates in this. So that's why it's so important to go to town meeting. And so I'll, I'll also welcome Jen Stacy, who arrived at seven o'clock, so for our minutes. Jen, did you have any questions or comments on this topic?
No, not from what I've heard. Thank you.
It's funny that Dan Smith was here tonight because when he was on the Select Board, you know, there's certain things that remind you of certain people. And anything that happened, Dan would be like, how's that gonna impact our bond rating? He was always really very, very on top of that, very, you know, cared a lot about it. So thank you, Mark, for asking that question. It's really important to take a minute to reflect on what that is every time we talk about this. Because we start to, we know what it is and we forget that other people don't necessarily know the nuances of it. So it was great to hear that from you, Connor.
Sure, thank you.
So if there's no other questions, there's a motion in the packet. Con, Craig, if you wanna make the motion?
Move to adopt the votes prepared by bond council. Connection with the town's twelve million dollar general obligation bond anticipation note dated June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and incorporate the text of the vote of the Select Board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second, Lamb.
So Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you. Thanks for being here, Linda.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So the next few items that we have are contract awards. So item seven is a contract award with Liberty Chevrolet for the Department of Public Works for two twenty twenty-one Chevy twenty-five hundred HD Silverado trucks. We have a memo in our packet. The total contract amount is one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine ninety-two, and it's funded through approved capital funds. Anything else to add to that, Connor, or?
You've covered it.
Any questions, comments? Okay, can I get a motion to?
Comment.
Putting them mute myself, sorry. Just a quick question. What's like the bid process for this? And, and I don't know if it applies generally to when we have contracts or if it's a question that we should be asking specifically each time. But, you know, is it, any kind of information will be discreet, understand more about the bid process?
So we are governed by a variety of state laws. Chapter thirty B covers most supplies and services. One forty-nine chat, uh, covers buildings. And thirty, thirty-nine M covers roads. I think I always mix buildings and those up. But basically, municipal governments have to follow statutory framework and state law and then regulations from the Inspector, of Inspector, of the Inspector General that lays out policies and standards that dictate to us the manners and methods in which we utilize to procure goods, services, labor, outsourced contracts and, and from any, anything. Whether it's pipes for a building, trucks for public works, sixty-something million dollar schools. All of it is, is kind of dictated to us in state law. The, the tools that we have to use, and kind of rigor, we have to apply usually increases project, which makes some sense. Uh, because the goal of the procurement law is to have public money that's used to purchase funds be allocated out through a fair, open, and competitive process. And so for things like this, where you're purchasing something of roughly one hundred thousand dollars, I used to know the thresholds off the top of my head. I, I don't right now. But I believe anything that's ten thousand dollars and under for a good or a service, the municipality has to use sound business practice under the law, which basically just means that if, you know, we, we gotta, if our auditors pull our file for an eight thousand dollar service, could we justify that we had good reason to believe that the business that we were executing that contract with was competent and responsive to the needs of the community? And if so, you basically check that box. If you're between ten thousand and I believe fifty, although Mike's free to jump in, Dottie's nodding too, then you have to solicit quotes in writing. So you would develop a specification sheet. In this case, you would say, we need, you know, you're, you're not allowed to. You, you, in theory, you're supposed to allow contractors make bids of substantially similar items, right? So you can't say, I want spark plugs only sold by this one dealer. You have to just provide a, what, something that is general and can get the job done, specific enough without being a proprietary spec. And then you would give that to at least three vendors who then can reply. Thankfully, they've made it a little less informal. You can just shoot that as a PDF via email and then people can submit written quotes. You have to give it to the lowest cost, what's called responsive and responsible bidder. So if one of the people who responds is, you know, your cousin Bob, and he's trying to sell you a truck and you know that, first of all, he's your cousin, so you shouldn't be selling him anything in your official capacity. But take that piece aside, you know he doesn't sell trucks. He's not responsive or responsible. You throw that. But take that piece aside, you know he doesn't sell trucks. He's not responsive or responsible. You throw that in the trash. You go with the next best one. For larger procurements of things over fifty thousand, which is most things, so anything under twenty-five thousand dollars by the Easton Charter can be executed administratively by me. Anything above twenty-five thousand dollars goes to the select board. They used to perfectly mirror these state thresholds, but as inflation has crept up over time, the state thresholds have grown, and we've never changed the local one, because it's, it's not a bad thing to have these check-ins and have the board see the things that the town's spending money on. And for the public who might see this to, to hear the answer to this question, because it's a good one. For larger things over a hundred thousand dollars, you have to, you do competitive sealed bids or request for proposals. So competitive sealed bids, you would have a detailed specification sheet that goes out, and you would have a time, place, and manner at which the bids, which have to be on forms, you specify and in a manner you specify submitted by that time. Super stickler is about rules. If it says the bids must be received at eleven AM and you walk in at eleven oh one, you get sent out. Too bad. And then they're opened publicly, and a record is, is transcribed of those, so that there is an accounting of what those bids were, who they were, and you would do something where you would say, you know, be apparent low bidder is X. And you don't say the low bidder is, because you say apparent, so that you could then do reference checks, due diligence, make sure that they're actually responsive. And again, much like with soliciting quotes, you, under procurement law, have to award the contract to the lowest price responsive and responsible bidder. The request for proposals process is usually done for things that aren't as straightforward. So if you're, you're looking for a supply, you typically do an invitation for bid. You're looking for a service, it's more, it's fifty fifty, but it's more common, you, you would lean on a request for proposals that allows you to introduce qualitative standards to the review process. So it's not just whoever's the cheapest. You can add qualitative metrics such as we, you know, for instance, the town hall will be, the exterior preservation is going to be done with CPA funds. That's over a million dollars. You would solicit requests for qualifications from designers, and you don't just have to go to the cheapest one. You can pick the one who has, in the opinion of a committee that meets publicly, the most substantially similar experience of buildings of this type. So there's a million different ways you can go about it. It's probably a lot more word salad than you were asking for. In this case, it's much, much more simple. You'll see in Dave's memo, he references that it is on the Plymouth County Commissioner's procurement contract. The procurement is, folks at board may be aware, is, is a immensely complex field. There's entire jobs and industries devoted just to, you know, nerds, me, who specialize in this stuff and try to make sense of these regulations. Thankfully, there are regional, county, and state procurement lists where another governmental agency does this work and basically pre-qualifies bidders and puts them on a state certified bid list that then smaller governments can purchase off of without having to conduct their own repeat of this. So in this case, these vehicles are available through the Plymouth County pre-certified bid list. So that allows the town to go to a state certified list of sellers who we can have confidence, have a re, have the right kinds of insurances, have the right kind of liability and indemnifications for their business, have paid all their taxes. As you'll see, every one of these contracts has a, a template form that we developed that has folks sign off that there's no collusion, there's none of these things to make sure we're complying with the law and ethical standards. When you go to a state bid list, that work's already been done for you, so that's nice. So in this case, this is a pre-certified bidder on a, a state certified county bid list.
Thank you, Connor.
Sure.
That, that it? That was short.
I'm not, uh, just being super succinct as hard.
Would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract to Liberty Chevrolet, the Department of Public Works, new twenty twenty-one Chevrolet, Chevrolet twenty-five hundred HD Silverado trucks, and the contract amount of one oh three, seven forty-nine and ninety-two cents?
Don't move, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Next, number eight is contract award for SJ Services Incorporated Building Cleaning Services, a contract extension. And this is based on bids received. The contract would be for sixty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Connor, do you have anything to add to that?
So this went through the invitation for bid process, and as part of that bid process, in the past, there was options for extension of the contract, which, so this is an existing business we work with, that it currently has the cleaning contract, and their proposal is an extension for one year at no change of terms and no increase in price. So we recommend award.
And obviously you're satisfied with your service?
Yes.
Any comments or questions? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to, to award that contract to SJ Services as noted in the packet?
Don't move, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Number nine, a contractor would for Weston and Sampson Services, operation and maintenance of the northeast, Easton Village Wastewater Treatment Plant, also another contract extension. They are our current vendor, and we would want to extend the contract term to June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the recommend, the, it is recommended by the Town Administrator's Office. Connor, did?
Sorry, just the term would extend to June twenty twenty-two.
What did I think?
Extension, twenty twenty.
Oh.
The time, time's moving too fast.
I'm reading it right here at twenty twenty-two and saying the wrong date, so thank you. Any comments or questions on this one?
I have a quick question. And it's, the, the previous one actually brought this question. Is there an increase in cost?
No, this is a one-year extension with all terms the same.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to award this contract to Weston and Sampson as noted in the agenda packet?
Move, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Item ten, Southeastern Regional Services Group, contract awards for water and sewer treatment chemicals. Harcross Chemicals Incorporated and Roberts Chemicals Company. So the recommendation, Sursage, is the procurement agency that we work with to award the, the water and sewer treatment chemicals for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Any, anything else to add to that, Connor?
So this is a, a good, this is like procurement night, which is good. So this is another type of purchasing consortium. So Sursage is a Southeastern Regional Massachusetts, Southeastern Regional Services Group. It's a group of, I think, twenty to thirty municipalities in this area of the state. We pay a nominal fee to be a member, and it is a group purchasing consortium, because every DPW, or maybe not every, but most DPWs, no matter what town you are in, need seal coating. They're gonna need chlorine and various things, and so they, this is a way for us to bulk purchase at a more advantageous cost than we would be able to if we bought directly.
Any comments or questions on this one? Would somebody like to make a motion to award the contract to to, for water and sewer treatment chemicals to Hackrose Chemicals and Roberts Chemicals as noted in the packet?
Move, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes, sorry.
And Fulgenetti, yes. The next one is also with Southeastern Regional Services Group, and this is a contract award for the Department of Public Works Supplies to LaRusso Corp, Borro Sand and Stone, G. Lopes, EJ Company, John Hodley and Sons, T.L. Edwards Incorporated, Dennis K. Burke Incorporated, and the Peterson Oil Service. There's an attached recommendation to make this award, and it's recommended that we approve. Anything, any comments or questions on this? Somebody like to make a motion to award the contracts on item eleven as noted in the packet?
So move, Bajer.
Second, Lamb.
Bajer and Lamb?
Bajer, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Item twelve, discussion and vote on the select board policy for remote participation for boards and committees. Connor, do you wanna lead us off on this one?
Sure, so I'm kind of lost in a shuffle of the overwhelmingly positive news of where things are heading in the COVID world with restrictions easing, vaccination rates continuing to grow, cases plummeting. Governor Baker, the day of town meeting on May seventeenth, announced that in addition to most economic restrictions easing on May twenty-ninth, that the state of emergency that he declared in two thousand twenty would be lifted on June fifteenth, so eight days from now. Part of that ha- there's obviously a symbolic importance there, but there's significant impacts on the economy and municipal government from this, because many of the policy paradigms under which we've all been operating were issued via emergency order of the governor, which he has the ability to do when a state of emergency is in effect. Related to this topic, the ability for public boards to have remote meetings didn't exist before COVID. And unless the state legislature takes action in the next eight days, and the governor's filed legislation requesting they do so, overnight on June fifteenth, you no longer can have meetings this way. So hopefully the legislature will act and adopt. The governor has proposed a variety of legislative tweaks to make permanent or extend many different parts of his emergency orders. There's some silver linings to come out of COVID, you know, different ways to do things. But in order for us to be prepared and to have them in books, right before the emergency was declared, Dottie and I were going to bring this policy to the select board in March of twenty twenty to make possible limited remote participation. So before COVID, open meeting law did have on the books, some limited remote participation protocols that require the local select board vote to adopt them essentially, that are significantly more restrictive than what we're doing right now. But in the event that the legislature either doesn't adopt and extend remote meetings as we know it right now, or it's, it, they miss the, the mark by a few days, this gives us at least some flexibility. Hopefully, we don't need to lean on this, but this is basically us proactively trying to get this on the books in case we need it, while we sort out what meetings will look like. I wish I had a very straightforward answer for everyone. What will meetings look like in eight days? But I don't. I, I, I could give a variety of options, but it depends on what the state legislature does. The MMA is really tuned into this. There's a lot of attention being paid to it. We're not alone in this regard. So we will learn a lot more in the next eight days. But what's in your packet is a copy of the Attorney General's open meeting law regs. If you go to page sorry, trying to pull it up. Section twenty-nine ten, which is page eighty-one of your packet, that lays out the remote participation preamble and, and adoption policies. Again, these are pre-COVID policies, but if the state doesn't act, this is all we have. What it would allow the board votes to adopt this is that absent emergency orders or new state legislation, a quorum of a board would need to meet in person. So in this case, three, including the chair, but up to two of those, or the non-quorum members, in the case of a select board, two members could phone in or zoom in or some other remote means. So it provides some level of flexibility. Assistant Town Minister Blanchard did most of the work pulling this together. He's been working with ECAT and Dottie on looking at what are some different options. You know, we're trying to contingency plan like we've had to do so much the past fourteen months on, well, if it's hybrid, what does it look like? If it's all in person, what does it look like? So we're working on that, and this is a part of it. But this, this would allow, you know, for, for all boards and committees, that a core, they could conduct a meeting if a quorum was in person, and the remainder of that board could phone in. So it's, it's, it is better than nothing, but it's substantially more restrictive than what we have today. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Just one question, Connor, I think I raised this earlier about the locations of some, some of our meeting spaces are so small.
Correct.
That if you end up with, you know, half dozen people coming in on a particular item, some people are not, on the committees are not willing to do that. They wanna, they wanna be separated by six feet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Which, which then creates an issue about where do we have these meetings? Select board room is probably fine, but other ones upstairs in the town hall probably are not.
Yeah, to be clear, it will be impossible to, to check every box that we would want to check. So if we have to go back in person, we're not going to have rooms that can accommodate people's desire to maintain distance. Also, to be clear, effective the twenty-ninth, those capacity restrictions don't, are not mandated anymore. That doesn't mean people would necessarily feel comfortable, right? That's a wholly separate issue. And there's, there's a variety of challenges that would come up, right? For the select board, you have staff assigned to your theory, except when I take too long answering procurement questions, make your, your board meeting easier. But it, it, it can be a lot to ask a citizen committee that's entirely volunteer with no professional staff to kind of overnight jump back into full in-person, managing whatever expectations on masking there may be with citizens and/or running virtual or hybrid technologies for the meeting. So there's a lot up in the air. You know, it may be a little dicey for a week or two when we see what the legislation says, but we, we will figure it out. You know, and so we are looking at some alternative locations, but no, there's no, there's no easy, you know, ju- jump right back in. Our rooms are small, our buildings are dated, but we'll, we'll, we'll take a, we're looking at our options and, and including hybrid things, if that's allowed by the state.
I do have a question. This makes perfect sense to me. If, not just now, but not just COVID, but for any circumstance. My question is about the public, though. So this would make it so that the chair of a board would have to be present, physically present, and then all board members can zoom in, call in, and now you have a forum.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, the chair.
But that doesn't, it doesn't address, say anything about, I'm sorry, say it again, Connor? You cut out or I cut out?
Not just the chair needs to be present, the chair plus a quorum. So in this case, it would need to be Dottie plus two of you, and then two people could call in.
But they also can participate in the meeting.
Yes, the two remote members could, yes.
It, it does, is there any mention of anything about the public? The public can still go to that public meeting and inside and?
That's correct.
Okay. And also, just for people at home, thi- this isn't a question of, do we go back? Do we start our meetings in, in, in person starting June fifteenth? That's not what we're talking about at all, because I have a feeling that something will get misconstrued in the translation of this, and somebody will be thinking that we're talking about not bringing back meetings in person or not bringing back meetings in person, and that's not the question we're discussing right now.
Not fully, because that's largely out of our hands.
Exactly.
Right, yeah, that's a decision of the state.
I don't want that getting misconstrued.
Right, so there's, at, at the, the highest level, the decision's gonna be made by the state, what level of remote meetings are still acceptable under the law. From there, we will need to make local decisions on what makes the most sense based on our physical restrictions in our buildings, based on our technology needs, and a variety of other factors, so. It will be a, a learning experience.
Usually you're the one saying you're on mute.
I know, I was. I was saying, Jamie, can you hear me? Are you on mute? And then I looked and I was on mute.
Uh, so to that, I have no questions. I, I think we're in wait and see mode.
Jen?
No questions. Oh, actually, so I guess the other question is, this would change the plan going forward in perpetuity for what we do in Easton in regards to this structure that's temporary, just to make you understand it today.
Yes, so there's a variety of options that could happen. One is the legislature adopts either a temporary extension or a permanent extension of the order that allows remote meetings, and nothing immediately changes here. That would be the smoothest transition and give us more time. And again, for anyone watching at home saying, well, why didn't you think of it sooner? We learned of this the night of town meeting. So it's, it, we didn't have a huge runway. Nor did the state legislature, frankly, before the state of emergency would subside. So one option is the legislature, before the fifteenth, extends or makes permanent remote meetings, and then that gives us more time to work out our logistics as far as meeting space, what kind of health protocols are appropriate if you're kind of cramming people back in a room, et cetera. The flip side of that is the state takes no action, and on June fifteenth, the emergency order is gone. There's no interim order. Therefore, meetings have to be in person, minus whatever local policy you adopt tonight. But the majority of action would have, have to be in person. Minus whatever local policy you adopt tonight, but the majority of action would have to be in person. And then of course, there's a million different things in the middle, depending on what the state legislature decides to do.
So this was always on the books, you know, four or five years ago, we actually talked about this, and I actually voted against it because I was thinking, well, now somebody could run for the select board that has no intention of going to a meeting. And, you know, you're going to get somebody who's really not committed to being a part of the board, and you always look at the worst possible scenario of something, and that was what I thought of. I didn't think of, you know, what if somebody was sick? What if somebody broke their leg and couldn't get to the meeting for two months or? Personally, I was traveling once and a special meeting got called by the select board on an important topic, and there was an, an executive session. And I couldn't participate in it because I was in an airport. I was allowed to call in and listen to the conversation, but I couldn't comment, I couldn't ask questions. It was incredibly frustrating, so, you know, now that where we are in life right now and we see all the things that could happen. You know, is it a little discriminatory towards having younger, younger people on your board that might not run? Because maybe if they have a sick kid at home and they can't physically get out to a meeting once in a while. I I've broadened the way that I look at this, and I think that there's a lot of examples for why, no matter what happens with the governor's decision, I really think that this is something that we should have. The Commission on Disabilities is allowed to do this by statute because of the nature of that committee, they can always meet remotely. But I think that it is important for the type of circumstances that could happen to anyone on the board. You know, that they, that we have this availability to have two members be able to uh, dial in remotely at any time for any reason. So I would definitely support this now. So that was my little true confessions. So if there's uh, if nobody has any other comments or questions, um, we can take a vote on this, Craig?
Dottie, I'm sorry, the the notes on this were very long, the motion is is the last paragraph um, citing the the CMR and to apply it to all local bodies.
Oh, do I have the wrong page here?
It is page eight of your packet, Craig, do you have it? Or if you're using hard copy, it's page five.
Oh, I have page five here.
Yep, cool, I'm recommending that the select board vote to allow remote participation in accordance.
Oh, I see it, I see it, okay, the last sentence. So so I am recommending that the select board vote to allow remote participation in accordance with the requirements of nine four zero CMR twenty nine point ten. With that vote applying to all subsequent meetings of all local public bodies in Easton.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
Enful, Janetti, yes. The next is item thirteen, discussion and vote to reaffirm the select board's statement of ethics and values. So every year um, after the elections, the new incoming board will um, read this statement of ethics and values, and I know it's one of Craig's favorite things that he likes to do every year. And last year, we wanted, you know, last year covid and last year, a lot of social unrest that was impacting our community. And we wanted to think about this a little bit and and take another look at it and see if this really aligned with where we are now. And what should we do about um, really calling out something to look at equity and and incorporate that into our core culture and values as the select board? And just with, you know, the way information was hitting us a million miles an hour from all different directions. I thought, rather than try to rush through and put something together, I wanted to take a thoughtful approach to it, and then the next thing you know, it's a year later. So we didn't actually vote on that this year. So what I did is I took the statement of ethics and I looked at it and it still said board of selectmen, and there was some gender references in there, and we had spent some time to change the, the, make gender neutral references in our previous work, so I just edited, it's in the packet. Basically, for the statement of ethics, um, to replace board of selectmen everywhere with select board. And then to use pronouns like there and they um, throughout the rest of that, so. Did anybody have any thoughts or questions or anything from looking at the statement of ethics? We'll start with that one. So it's pretty much a housekeeping. Craig, do you want to read through that and we'll vote on that tonight?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Connor, are we voting on, what would we do? Vote on this as amended?
Uh, for the statement of
Ethics.
And yes, ethics, your your value statement, your ethics statements are each separate, so I would recommend a vote to adopt them as uh, presented. With one vote for each.
Craig, is it easy enough for you to read this with the edits in it or?
Sure, I can do that, yeah. Okay, so this is a statement of ethics of the select board of Easton. A member of the select board in relation to their community should, A, realize that their basic function is to make policy with administration delegated to the town administrator. B, realize that in creating and enforcing town policy, the select board may direct the town administrator in setting priorities that affect policy, but that the day to day operations of the town are left to appropriate department heads. C, realize that they is one of a team and should abide by and carry out all board decisions once they are made. D, be well informed concerning the duties of a board member on both local and state levels. E, remember that they represent the entire community at all times. F, realize that the service on the board is service to the community and not service for personal or political or political benefit. And G, abide by the ethics guidelines established by the state. Number two, a member of the select board in their relations with the town administrator should, A, endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will direct and support the administration of or the benefit of the staff and residents of the community. B, recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refer complaints to appropriate members of the administration. C, give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging their duties. And D, refrain from instructing or requesting assistance from town department heads. Instead, all such activities shall be handled through proper administrative channels through the full board and the town administrator. Number three, a member of the board, select board, in their relations with fellow board members should, A, recognize that action at official legal meetings is binding and that they alone cannot bind the board outside of such meetings. B, refrain from making statements or promises regarding the outcome of matters that will come before the board until after having a full and fair opportunity to weigh the merits of an issue during a board meeting. C, uphold the intent of executive session and respect the privileged communication that exists in executive session. D, make informed decisions. E, refrain from communicating the position of the select board to reporters or state officials without prior board approval. And F, be respectful of other board members and their opinions. Four, a member of the select board in their relation with town staff should, A, treat all staff as professionals with clear, honest communications that respect the abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual. B, limit contact to specific town staff. Question of town staff and or request for additional background information should be directed only to the town administrator, town council, assistant town administrator, administrator assistant to the select board or department heads. The office of the town administrator should be copied on all requests or correspondence. C, never publicly criticize an individual employee. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town administrator through private conversation. D, limit requests for staff support and ensure that all requests go through the town administrator's office. And finally, E, ensure that any materials or information provided to a select person from a staff member be made available to all select board members.
Thanks, Craig. I like to see this every year because it does reaffirm uh, things that are very important to board members. One thing I noticed is that on um, which one was it?
On uh, one C.
Yeah, one C, realize that uh, they are one instead of is one, I missed that one, so we'll have to um, edit that also. Any other comments or questions? All right, um, with that, would somebody like to make a motion to um, to affirm the statement of ethics as edited in the packet?
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So similarly, the next one is the statement of values um, of the board, and um, this is a little bit shorter. I made just the change to the select board, and then I also changed um, protect and enhance a climate of acceptance and tolerance within the community of Easton. I've never liked that phrase tolerance. I've, I changed that to inclusion, and um, I think with the spirit of um, that, that statement, it rings a little bit better. So anybody have any other comments or questions on this one?
No, but I agree with your uh, with your comment on tolerance. I don't like the connotation.
All right, great. Craig, do you want to read this one?
Sure, unless Mark wants to read it.
Uh, I, I don't think I have it.
Okay, I can do it.
Oh, wait, no, I do have it. I will read this one, sure. Selectboard's statement of equity and inclusion. The Eastern Select Board embraces diverse.
The one before that.
The values of the board.
Uh, Town of Eastern's statement of values of the select board adopted uh, reaffirmed today, that's today's date. June seventh, two thousand twenty one. Protect and enhance the financial health of the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the educational excellence offered by the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the historic nature of the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the professionalism of the town's staff, boards, and committees. Protect the environmental quality of the Town of Easton. Enhance relationships and communications. Emphasize long-term strategic planning. Protect and enhance a climate of acceptance and inclusion within the community of Easton. Protect and enhance housing opportunities for the residents of Easton.
Great. Craig, would you like to make a motion to affirm the statement of values as of today's date as edited in the packet?
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So this would, you know, one of the choices that we could have done is we could have modified those two um, previous uh, statements of values to include diversity, equity, and inclusion, or we could do it as a separate statement, and I felt that um, it's more powerful as a separate statement, so I drafted this. Mark, do you want to, since you were starting to read that before, if you want to read this again?
Sure. Selectboard's statement of equity and inclusion. The Eastern Select Board embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion as a core value of its work. As leaders in our community, the select board will stand together against discrimination of any kind, foster an environment that is welcoming and inclusive, intentionally seek out volunteers from underrepresented groups to serve on boards and committees, promote and celebrate diversity, champion equity, and cultivate inclusion. Welcome all residents to have a voice in community decisions. Create policies that recognize and value the needs of all community members. The select board recognizes that a thriving and vibrant community is made up of residents, businesses, and activities that include and welcome everyone.
Any comments or questions on this? I think it's been helpful to, you know, we're, we've worked, uh, Mark and Craig and I for three years now plus. And also working with Jamie and Jen through the Finance Committee, we've gotten to know you pretty well. So I tried to uh, think of all the things that I know that we've spoken about, you know, on and off the record about what we care about in these issues. And um, I do a lot of work around equity in my day job as well, so that I have exposure to a lot of these kinds of policies. And I kind of picked and chose pieces of things that I liked in other places and um, and put it together here. I also sent it to the Human Rights Committee for them uh, for the chairs to take a look at and weigh in and sent it to the Raising Multicultural Kids, another really strong um, agency that champions diversity and inclusion in the community, and they um, had one little tweak on it um, and and they were happy with it, so. If uh, if there are no comments or questions or changes, Craig, if you want to make a motion to accept the select board's statement of equity and inclusion as written in the packet.
Dottie, uh, ju- just one, I just wanted to thank you for for doing that too. You uh, obviously solicited uh, from us any opinions that we had and then uh, to go and take it to those other agencies, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
If I move that we accept the uh, select board's statement of equity and inclusion as in the, as presented in the package.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
Enful, Janetti, yes. Great, thank you very much, that's a big accomplishment for us this year.
Thank you, Doug.
Next is the discussion and vote authorizing me as the chair and Connor as the town administrator to sign and submit the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding application on behalf of the Town of Easton, and to authorize the same to execute and submit any additional documentation, applications, or instruments necessary to secure ARPA funding and the, and for the duration of the program term. Connor?
Attached uh, in your packet is a couple of documents, one from the uh, State uh, Department of Administration and Finance. So uh, the Commonwealth ha- uh, and the Department of Revenue has an office devoted to uh, federal fund management. They've been very busy uh, the past year and a half, and that will continue for the next four plus years. Uh, and as well as a summary uh, from the United States Treasury on the uh, local funding aspect of the American Rescue Plan. So you know, most news outlets and 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 Americans paid a lot of attention to uh, the president's proposal shortly after taking office uh, for its inclusion of stimulus checks going to individuals, uh, some more funding for business relief and things like that. But it also included significant uh, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars for state and local uh, financial aid. Uh, which was something that had been being requested through the National League of Cities, the MMA, and most municipal and state associations and governors. All i- i- in two thousand and twenty, uh, CARES passed uh, in the uh, calendar year twenty twenty had some funding that was able to be used by municipal governments, which was very useful, uh, but it was more restrictive, it was much more of a direct response to covid. Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act funding is uh, more flexible, there's a longer term spend down and some broader categories of use guided towards recovering uh, from covid, not simply responding to it. So one of the steps that we need to take to start uh, utilizing and and planning for the use of these funds is for the town to authorize uh, Dottie and me to basically check a box on the state website that says, yes, we would like our federal money, please, uh, and that's what this is. So um, in the packet, I believe there is a summary, there's a quite a lengthy spreadsheet, uh, starting on page ninety two of your PDF packet, that itemizes the estimated federal aid to be sent to every city and town in Massachusetts, including Easton. So there are some definite idiosyncrasies in this law, right? Anytime you're crafting federal legislation for the entire country, there are pieces of it uh, that have um, different impacts uh, regardless of intent. So in Massachusetts, we are relatively unique, we have very, very strong local government that provides most direct services. And most of the rest of the US outside of the Northeast, but counties do a lot of that. Uh, and so in Massachusetts, some counties that have not been technically abolished, although they have reduced roles compared to the rest of the US, are receiving uh, a good amount of the federal funds. This did happen with CARES, all the counties except Plymouth transferred it to the state to make available to municipalities. The county we reside in Bristol will be receiving a large sum of federal money for its member municipalities. Dottie and I have been very engaged on that, we've gone to county commission meetings, uh, we are in touch with our commissioners to try to understand what their expectations are for us to access those funds, uh, because roughly two out of every three dollars uh, quantified for Easton is currently going towards the county. So that's going to be a work in pro- progress over the summer. Uh, but the remainder of the uh, funds are laid out here, so Easton will receive directly uh, outside of the um, county situation, two point six million roughly, one point three million uh, once this vote is taken. And we filed that paperwork and another one point three million in a year from now. The county's receiving roughly four. Um the county's receiving roughly four point eight million that could uh flow towards Easton. Um although that, there's a a lot up in the air about how, when, how much, et cetera. So we're working uh uh very hard on that. Uh there are a variety of uh categories that ARPA funds can be used for. Uh they can continue to be used for direct response to COVID, so things like vaccine clinics paying wages and uh costs associated with that. We're actually running a vaccine clinic tonight. Um as we speak, uh we're gonna continue to try and explore partnerships, uh more targeted approach vaccine clinics, now that it's obviously pretty readily available for everyone. But doing things like partnering uh Vote and Vax, and Mark uh can weigh in on on some other ideas we're having later in my COVID update for some other partnerships. Uh there are broader economic recovery uh uses for these funds. You could use them for revenue replacement uh for municipal and educational budgets, which is huge. Uh that could have a very positive impact on the community. Uh crisis intervention assistance uh for the community, a a whole host of really uh important um prerogatives. So the first step is requesting the funds. Um and uh you know, from there, we will, we've already begun doing an accounting of federal funds on hand, or we've been doing that the whole time. But uh getting a good grip on where we are with CARES, where we are with ESAR funds for schools, where we are with FEMA public assistance, and starting to basically go through the accounting exercise of uh, you know, typically when you have access to funding like this, you would want to make sure that you were using the most restrictive programmatic dollars first and saving the more broad funds for last, right? Um so we've we've been doing that already. Um we've made very good use of our CARES funds. Uh and FEMA uh and the schools have been making good use of ESAR, so we'll be we'll be working on that um and trying to get a grip from the county on what we can expect. Uh so that we can start coming up with um well-founded multi-year spend-down plans for these federal dollars. But in order to to do a do that coherently, we need to really know what we're starting with. So uh this is the first step. Um I know there's a lot in the packet here. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Right?
So Connor, it's it's over a three-year period of time? Is that what, two thousand twenty-four is, is that what um the available?
So the funds, the funds need to be encumbered by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, but can be spent through, I believe, two thousand and twenty-six. So the that gives you flexibility. So let's say you're doing a capital project. If you know what that cost is and you encumber it in twenty-four, you still have access to the funds into twenty-five and twenty-six. But so um but that's a quite a substantial range of time to work with these funds. Um the likelihood that we're still dipping into these funds in two thousand twenty-six is gonna be largely driven by how much we start with. If we're only working with the direct aid, stretching that five and a half years would be a lot. Uh for context, we've spent roughly two point four million between CARES and FEMA in the past eighteen months.
Second question has to do with how we can be helpful to you and Dottie with the commissioners in Bristol County.
Oh, Dottie, I think that's a Dottie question. You're you're on the advisory board.
Yeah, so because I'm the chair, I'm on the Bristol County Advisory Board, and that means that we vote on the budget for Bristol County, which is basically taking care of the courthouses and Bristol Aggie, the agricultural school. Um this is the first time that the commissioners have had this situation come up, so they're still trying to learn it. Um we were on the phone immediately, day one, saying, hey, so how are we gonna get our money? Like, we were standing right in line. Um I also serve on the Policy Committee with the MMA that we've been also talking about these, and Connor serves on the MMA different policy committees. So um it it's been a lot of conversation and a lot of communication with the commissioners. They're still trying to figure it out. So there, you know, there's really nothing extra that we can do other than Connor and I staying in touch with them. Um you know, interestingly enough, this only impacts the communities that are under fifty thousand. So other uh the cities in Fall River, in Bristol County, like Fall River, New Bedford. It's they they're gonna get all their money upfront. They're not scrambling over the hundred and six million dollars or so that's left for the smaller communities. And Easton, Mansfield, and Norton were the the ones that came to that um Commissioners Meeting. None of the other, I don't know what are, like, probably twenty communities, I think.
Yeah.
Came.
So we're raising awareness with our colleagues to make sure that they understand. I mean, this is relatively complex stuff. The the United States Treasury guidance to us was a hundred and fifty-one pages, single-spaced.
What version was eighteen pages, right? Or eight pages?
That was that was the Cliff Notes, right? So that so, yeah, the the county is has been pretty cooperative so far. Um they seemed uh open to uh our feedback, which was which was good. Um so we're gonna keep showing up and 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 working with them to figure out what we what we have to work with. Uh you know, we we've made clear, um you know politely, that it it's our opinion that uh and I think state law backs it, that municipal governments are really the ones delivering most services. In in, you know, in the context of home rule, whether it's policing or public works or roadways. Uh you know, county governments don't have the legal jurisdiction. You know, the county can't just decide they're gonna be running sewer systems now because they have money. Right? Uh that's that's our role, and they don't contest that. They, just like I wouldn't say it's our job to run the Sheriff's Department. It's not. Um but for context, Bristol County's operating budget's roughly a quarter the size of the Town of Easton's. So uh we're working with them and we'll we will stay in touch, so um you know, if you happen to speak with them, that that's great, but um we are we are, we're we're staying very close on this issue.
So, Dottie, I'm I'm a little confused. So the cities like Fall River, New Bedford, they're not part of this hundred million dollars that the that the county got? Or that they already, they automatically get their share of that hundred million dollars?
They're not part of that. They get their, any any city or uh a city or fifty thousand or more gets all of their money from directly from the Treasury, not not the way there's like a split up of we get the two point six million direct. And then the county money's kind of to 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 be determined how they split that up.
Okay, okay. Well, if we can be helpful in this process, uh feel free to uh reach out.
We could potentially get another four million dollars from the county if it's allocated in the way that we thought it would be in the beginning when the Mass Municipal Association ran a a, you know, an accounting of what they thought everyone would get based on a per capita. So it's some.
Spreadsheet said almost four point nine million, so it was it was pretty clear. It was right there.
Right.
Right.
I think um, you know, this this has never happened before to the Bristol County Commissioners. Uh they've never had to deal with this, so I don't know how much experience they have in this forum, uh but I would ask both you, you know, Connor and Dottie to stay. I know you will and you are, but your feedback and input, it's like, you know, it's like the P-FAS thing. You guys pushed the state and now they're looking to you on like how to unravel it. So I would ask that you guys stay on top of it because that represents a lot of money. And my only other comment is um, you know, how fast can you sign that uh that application?
We'll submit it first thing in the morning.
Outstanding.
And and you know we will, we.
I know you will, and that's not even a joke.
Uh we uh, you know, the yes, like the county, um I think they have roughly sixty days before they receive any funds. And they they did indicate that they would attempt to have a stakeholder meeting with the town management and elected uh reps uh prior to that and and get to a better place of understanding for all of us, so we can hopefully have coherent plans.
They've they've been welcoming the feedback and and the information, so.
That's right.
We're helping them. Imagine how nervous you'd be if you're, you know, they're elected, right? So there's three of them, and all of a sudden, you've got like all these big decisions, all this big money. It's nothing you've done before, like you said. You know, they wanna make sure they're doing it right also. Um so it's it's a collective effort. Jamie?
Uh yeah, I just have one quick question. When I, and this is, when I look at a town like Gloucester, thirty thousand people, their per capita is five hundred and sixty-seven, and I I get it, this is also a metropolitan city is how it's listed. What drives that huge delta where we're a town of twenty-five thousand and you know, obviously, we're not considered a metropolitan city, but that's that's a community of five thousand more, and their per capita is uh four times ours.
Yeah, so it's a good question. So you you hit the nail on the head, though, by pointing out some are considered metropolitan cities and others are considered non-entitlement units of local government. Uh a core focus of the ARPA money is uh social and racial equity. Uh and making sure that a larger amount of federal dollars are uh via this this per capita formula distributed to communities that are uh more uh economically uh impacted by COVID. Uh statistically, you know, uh communities that are less well-off financially have uh in in a very broad-based sense, right? So you're right here, we're looking at a five thousand person difference, maybe it doesn't make sense, but if you're crafting policy for three hundred and thirty million people and statistically, uh you know, lower-income uh Americans, non-white Americans have suffered worse illness, uh worse health outcomes, worse economic devastation from COVID, that was one of the key factors that uh underpinned this legislation. That's why you'll see cities uh get a larger per capita share.
Great, thank you.
That's why also if you've been watching the news, you'll notice that uh Randolph, um Chelsea, I forget the other two. There were four communities that they're they're gonna change their status because of those kinds of impacts. Um they show as non-entitlement when they really should be classified as um as metropolitan cities. Jen?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm eager uh to move forward with this and to stop being able to plan and um be strategic. You know, one point three million, which would be half of the first uh tranche, if they is is how they refer to it, is you know, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not, it's not that much. We have to be really thoughtful and uh deliberate and intentional of how we spend that money um from a COVID standpoint, but also how we can use that money to invest in things that will help us recover from COVID. And knowing whether we're looking at, you know, two-point sticks or potentially, you know, ni- close to to nine or eight or nine million is gonna be, make a big difference in that. So if somebody would like to make a motion to authorize uh Connor and I to sign and submit for the American Rescue Act Plan and associated documents as noted in the packet?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
A C, yes.
And full genetti, yes. So next is the standing update for the COVID response. And I was thinking about this the other day, when we're gonna be able to stop doing this, or maybe make it like a every other meeting thing. And for a whole year, literally, the the governor has been doing press announcements on a weekly basis. And even if we wanted to say, you know, there's no update this week, we'll push it to the next meeting, there's always an update. There's things have been changing incredibly in this year. And looking at how much work goes into these updates, you know, I wanna say, Connor, what are you gonna do with all your free time when this is over? Because it's a lot of work to put this together and stay on top of all these um pieces and parts. So I'm gonna be excited when we don't have to do this anymore.
Uh thank you. Um and and I I guess I'm at the end of this, looking to hear from the board on what you're, what you would like to see moving forward. You know, so we had town meeting the seventeenth, so I did not do one of these events. The last time we did one of these was May third. And so tonight is actually uh really interesting because so, so much has changed, Dottie, to your point, since May third. May third, CDC hadn't issued the guidance that vaccinated Americans can go without masks yet. Uh the Commonwealth had just moved to a kind of cautious stance of uh if you're outside, you don't even have a mask. We didn't have a runway on economic reopenings, and now Fenway's full, right? So it's just, it's incredible how fast things have changed, and and what I'm excited to share is that all the stats are pointing in a direction that we've long wanted to see. Um so when we wrap up, I'm happy to hear from the board what what would be useful for you moving forward. So uh EMA has scaled down to uh having a standing uh call once per week. Uh that used to be seven days a week, and then it was five days a week, and then three, and then two, and now we're at one, which is uh a good thing for everyone's uh well-being. So COVID in the United States, uh we are over thirty-three million uh cumulative cases. Thankfully, the rate of growth has slowed down substantially. We're nearing six hundred thousand uh total uh lives lost in the United States again. Same thing, thankfully, rate of of death has slowed substantially. The daily average of uh cases right now is the lowest it has been effectively since testing started last spring, fourteen thousand. Of course, wanna see that go lower, but it 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 is precipitously falling off. Test positive rate is under three percent in the United States. This graph uh is shows or visualizes that progress. Uh so obviously, we had a a really horrible surge in the winter uh and uh had a little bit of a bump up in the spring as reopenings were racing against the vaccine campaign, and what this shows is that the vaccine campaign won. Uh and that they work. Rolling average uh in a day in America, fourteen thousand cases. It's down seventy-one percent since this, the last time we presented this, since May third. Um it's the lowest on record since the pandemic. And hospitalizations, there were over a hundred thirty thousand Americans were in the hospital in January, and now it's uh shy of seventeen thousand. It's down, that's dropped fif- fifty percent in one month, uh which is just incredible. This is this graph from the last presentation in May. So we were doing fifty thousand cases a day and thirty-five thousand people were in the hospital, and now we're at fourteen thousand cases a day and less than seventeen thousand folks, fewer, sorry, in the hospital. Uh so just remarkable progress on the national scale. This is a risk assessment from COVID Act Now. Everyone is moving towards the uh lighter yellow. Uh maybe we'll see green soon. Uh which is remarkable. Uh you know, the board will recall in winter, this was basically purple. Uh they actually had to add deeper color reds because of the rate of community spread throughout the country. This is what it looked like a month ago. So um even since then, just very obvious uh shift of risk assessment. In Massachusetts, uh cases have have begun to slow dramatically. I saw today, first day since, I don't know how long. Uh fewer than a hundred cases confirmed in the entire state, which is just great news. This is from Johns Hopkins University. Again, Massachusetts, like the the country, saw a really horrible surge in cases, up to six thousand a day in January. Uh we're down um ninety, over ninety percent since then now. Right now, we're below two hundred cases a day on average. As I just said, we dropped below a hundred cases today. Um we've dropped, our daily cases have dropped eighty percent since May third, which is wonderful. Hospitalizations have declined from twenty-two hundred this winter. There were forty-four hundred last spring. They're down to under two hundred now. Again, the lowest in in nine months, um which is just wonderful news. Hospitalizations have dropped sixty-six percent this month, which again is testament to the vaccine campaign. This was this graph last month. Um so on May third, you had five hundred and twenty-five uh residents of the Commonwealth hospitalized. Now it's one seventy-eight, and it continues to drop, which is just great. Uh May seventeenth, the governor made a series of relatively um large announcement announcements, including that effective uh one or two weekends ago, May twenty-ninth, almost all COVID restrictions are now gone. Uh mask requirements are largely lifted unless you are unvaccinated. Um there's certain spaces that even if you are vaccinated, public transit, congregant care settings, you are still expected to wear a mask. Um most capacity limits have been lifted. Uh it it's um really a remarkable uh return to uh most pre-COVID norms. Something that has a larger impact on daily life for us is if a state of emergency ends on June fifteenth. We touched on that. That that'll have impacts on how boards are allowed to meet and things like that. Um it'd also have an impact on outdoor dining in Massachusetts. Uh a lot of the outdoor dining that a lot of folks have become accustomed to and and like quite a bit, I think myself and everyone on the board included. Um a lot of that was done through emergency orders of the governor that allowed cities and towns to um streamline that process in a way that would have been unthinkable uh pre-COVID, to to allow select boards to adopt a policy and delegate to a staff person basically to look at a site plan and say like, yeah, this is reasonable and safe. You can have outdoor dining without going through hearings and and all that stuff. Um that goes away. Uh what the state of emergency ends in our policy locally, I believe, is sixty days after that. So that'll get folks through summer, thankfully, and our office has been working with businesses who've taken advantage of that emergency outdoor dining to uh go to the appropriate permanent permitting authorities, whether the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, who have been great with the applicants. So there's going to be a lot of um changes. Uh so again, silver linings, a lot of folks got used to. One one thing that's going away is my understanding entirely is like to go cocktails with your takeout food. That is, that was part of an emergency order. That will no longer be around. So there's going to be a lot of different changes and ripple effects from that. The governor proposed a legislative package to the state legislature to consider and make uh permanent or extend a lot of those things. Covering outdoor dining to open meeting law. So we'll see uh what shakes out in the next eight days, and we will respond accordingly. So in Easton, this is the uh color-coded map. Easton is in the green. We were not the last time we met. Uh this is the first time we've been in the the green uh category since last summer. Uh and if you just look at the difference from statewide, this is right now, June seventh. This was a month ago. So we're at a place now in the Commonwealth where for the first time since these metrics were introduced. Um no city or town in Massachusetts is in the high-risk zone, according to. No city or town in Massachusetts is in the high-risk zone, according to the DPH. Easton is nearing twenty-two hundred total cases. Although the rate of growth has slowed, I believe the fatality rate has remained unchanged since your last meeting, which is good. So this shows our history. This is a rate of cases per one hundred thousand residents. And it is color-coded to that state risk assessment. You could see January was really brutal. Test positive rate was over ten percent briefly. And then we, like the Commonwealth, started seeing a drop through February and March, a slight uptick in April when there was that race of reopening versus vaccines. And again, the vaccines are winning. We are dropping into the lowest per capita caseload, the lowest actual caseload that we've had. This is the actual weekly new cases. So we're looking at ten cases in a week now compared to a hundred and thirty-five a week in January. So just moving in the right direction. Our test positive rate is slightly above the state average. It it popped up this week. I'm gonna check with the health director. I believe that is likely a result of the fact that Stonehill had a surveillance testing program going while folks were in school, and I think they are no longer in school. So that will reduce the amount of recurring negative tests that go into that pool. We'll keep an eye on it. This is the raw data that informs those graphs. You know, again, you see we had four hundred cases in Easton cumulative as of Halloween, and that skyrocketed to two thousand over the, over the winter surge. And that has thankfully slowed down and and really, really dropped. You know, on a bi-weekly basis, we were doing almost two seventy-plus every two weeks, and now we're down to about twenty-four. Again, all that to point to, you know, there's, there's one thing that's really changed since since the surge in the the winter, and that's that vaccines are available. Activities that people are able to do now are, put you in more contact and closer contact than than we, any of us have been in eighteen months. And cases are at the lowest they've been the course of the pandemic, and that's because the vaccines are working. So municipal services, so we are open three days a week still. I assume that'll that'll expand as we head into the summer. And we are following the state DPH guidance that if you are fully vaccinated, you don't need to have a mask on in our public buildings. We still require masking for medical procedures and things like that for first responders. Or when we're doing something like a vaccination clinic, we require masks for all. And we obviously still have all of our services available remotely for anyone who is not fully there yet and and fully comfortable. I know that, you know, it's almost whiplash inducing. As I said, May third, last time we did an update, we had no runway from CDC. Ten days after that, you know, CDC issues guidance that if you're vaccinated, you're pretty much good to go. And four days after that, the Commonwealth says the emergency is ending in in a week. So people are, of course, still going to be able to engage with us remotely. People can, of course, still wear masks. We still have PPE virus guards. All of those protective measures are still in place for folks. Municipal services for public board and committee meetings, we, again, we've touched on that. We're keeping a very close eye on on that. And the board adopted that interim step that hopefully we don't need, but will will push something out to all of our board and committees come the fifteenth, once we know what the state law is. Vaccine update, vaccines are available for everyone. And in the case of Pfizer, anyone over the age of twelve. The United States has surpassed three hundred million total doses administered, more than fifty percent of the population, I believe, including children, have received at least one dose. Massachusetts is exceeding that. If you see here, Massachusetts is over eight million doses administered. Roughly two-thirds of our residents have received at least one dose. Majority are fully vaccinated, and we're continuing to move in the right direction. In Easton, we, this graph, the the data fields have changed from the DPH now that twelve to fifteen-year-olds are included. I'm not sure all of these totally sum, because if you look all the way to the right, you have individuals fully vaccinated, and they don't have anything for twelve to fifteen, because I believe that that has not been in play for long enough. Another thing that changed since the last update is that Pfizer was okay for twelve-year-olds, right? So major, major development. Since then, in Easton, out of the eleven hundred and forty eligible in that group, four hundred and ninety have already gotten their first Pfizer shot, which is pretty incredible, if you think about that. We were joking internally, you know, vote and vax, that we ran. Another thing that happened since your last update was intended as a way to help encourage folks to turn out and vote, and a lot of people showed up, couldn't vote because they weren't eighteen. But we're okay with that because it's still a really good public service, and we're happy to see that. It was really, really great seeing parents who we had seen at one of our January or February clinics being able to bring their their family now. So so that's great. And tonight at Frothingham Hall, they're running another vaccine clinic, follow-up shots, first doses, working with Rite Aid. And there's just tons and tons of families. So it's it's great. Individuals on a per capita basis who've received at least one dose, if you, over, anyone over thirty, eighty percent, eighty-seven percent, ninety, ninety-two, just really, really good numbers to see. So we're gonna continue to to work there. As you see, that drops off pretty steep when you get to twenty to twenty-nine-year-olds. You know, you think twelve to fifteen-year-olds have only been able to get the vaccine for three weeks, and they're not far behind twenty to twenty-nine-year-olds who've been able to do it for two months. So we're gonna keep working on that. Keep trying to find ways to get creative and bring smaller, more flexible clinics to where people are. Vote and Vax was one example of that. We have another one running tonight. And additional clinics will be planned with Rite Aid and and other partners as 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 we can. I think, Mark, am I able to share what we're trying to work on? Is it a state secret for now or?
No, I would definitely suggest sharing what we're trying to work on to make awareness so that those who want to participate in one or the other or both can, and we can draw up some interest and go from there.
So Vote and Vax was well-received, which is great. And so we've been thinking, okay, what are some other ways and partnerships we can explore to bring vaccines to where people are? We were at a roundtable with Congressman Ock and Kloss, and you hear some businesses, particularly service industries, that employ lots of those twenty, twenty-nine-year-olds who are not as vaccinated as their older neighbors are having a hard time hiring. There's a variety of reasons for that, labor shortage, folks who have, you know, better benefits than maybe they're being offered. But also, a lot of folks aren't fully vaccinated yet. And so we thought, well, gee, why don't we try a job fair and vaccine day at the same time? And so we are working with Chamber of Commerce, and I believe now Mass Hire will be working with Easton's emergency management team to try to pull together a job fair for Easton businesses and area businesses that comes with a vaccine clinic at the same time, kind of as a way of responding to, you know, businesses reopening and let's help people get back on their feet. And if if part of what's stopping them is that they don't, there's no, as far as I know, there's no one-stop shop right now to go apply for a job and get vaccinated, but we're gonna make one, as long as we can get businesses to partner with us. So any business in Easton that hears this, you know, give my office a call, contact Mark Lamb. We will work on facilitating that. We're targeting June twenty-eighth. So hopefully by your next meeting, we'll have something concrete there. But that's another area where we're trying to get a little creative and keep making vaccines available where people are. So, Mark, I don't know if you wanna add any feedback you got.
That was, that was a great summary. It's, you know, we, in that meeting, you know, the Eastern Chamber spoke with Congressman Ock and Kloss, and we identified some needs that were just kind of put out on the table, to Connor's point. There are businesses, believe it or not, that they're short employees, and there are people that are looking for jobs. And there are people that haven't been vaccinated. So let's, you know, Connor had this idea, let's take this one event and let's fill all needs. So, you know, I've been talking to the Eastern Chamber. I spoke with Mass Hire today. I have some more calls to make. But he reached out to me because this is an economic boost. You're, you're putting people in jobs, you're helping businesses. So it's an economic boost, it's a health boost. I do believe this is going to happen, and you can, I want to be clear though as well. You can just show up for the job fair. You can just show up for the vaccine, and you can also show up for both. So this isn't, this isn't only, you know, for people who need both, so anybody can show up. But I do believe it'll be, it is happening, will be a success. And if you aren't, please contact myself or Connor, and we'll get you set up.
Thank you. So we haven't had a vaccine graph in a while because after April, the town was, like most cities and towns, the state shifted its priority to mass vaccine sites. And now, as we kind of shift with covid, most mass vaccine sites are actually going to close in the summer because the populations that that has been successful at reaching, which it has been, credit where it's due, Massachusetts is one of the leaders in America. Folks who were willing to drive to Gillette have done so. So the 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 population that is responsive to that type of vaccine clinic is largely saturated. And so the state is looking towards regional partnerships, which we have with Bridgewater State, who we're a member partner with, who administers vaccine throughout the summer. And we have started coming up with these smaller clinics like Vote and Vax. The one we're doing tonight is doing more than a hundred doses. And we did almost all of it in-house. We're now also doing some of it through partnerships. Rite Aid Pharmacy has worked with us. They, basically, we provide the logistics, the pre-registration support, the planning. They provide a pharmacist, and they deal with the hazardous ways for needles and the dose control and all that great stuff. And it worked smoothly at town meeting. I got to stop by Frothingham tonight. Like I said, it was really nice seeing lots of families. We're, we'll be doing over a hundred doses tonight at Frothingham, and we're gonna keep up the work, working with Rite Aid and any other partner we can through the summer to keep doses moving. So I believe now we're, I had the number somewhere. It's somewhere, I think, roughly fifteen hundred or to seventeen hundred doses pushed through Easton directly so far. So I'll get the exact number for you next time. But it's, it's good. It's good to see it revived in a new way and continue to make that service available. And we're looking forward to to continue to explore ideas so that we can work with reaching folks where they are. Because obviously, there's, those huge sites are already kind of available. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep up the work. And that's what I have for the covid update. I'm happy to take questions from the board on the vaccine planning or just more generally about what your expectations or what the utility is for you on these presentations moving forward.
I just wanna, I think, Connor, that, first of all, I think you did an outstanding job. You continue to do that. And Mark, I think that's a great idea. Kudos to putting all that work in. My, my concern going forward is that this this thing about, well, if you're, if you're not vaccinated, we recommend you wear a mask. That's sort of, you know, that makes me a little bit nervous about when you go to larger venues, et cetera. I'm still wearing a mask when I go into into public spaces. I think that's a, you know, a responsibility or right of an individual to decide what they want to do. And that doesn't mean I'm not gonna go out to dinner and things like that. But I, I think that there's a, still a concern when you're talking fifty-five percent of the people in Massachusetts, and we're, we're near the top of of the number of people vaccinated, that's still, that's only fifty-five percent of the people in the Commonwealth. So anything that you and Mark and folks can do to increase that number for break, for in in Easton, that's fantastic. But I'm still concerned about the larger state in terms of the numbers of people who are actually getting vaccinated. And I, I'm looking at the Gen X numbers. I think I'm right. Twenty-one and twenty-nine is Gen X, right?
No, no, Gen Xers are like, I'm gonna offend some people on this call, I think, but they're like getting towards middle age, right?
Oh, that's, that's. No, twenty-nine, I thought twenty, is that still millennial?
Which is younger than millennials.
So it's, so it's Gen Z that we're talking about.
I don't know what the exact cutoff is, but.
Feel a little hurt by hearing that the Citizen Taxation Aid Committee is calling sixty elderly.
They got that one too, Daddy.
I was holding back.
Anyways, Connor, keep up the good luck.
Thank you. But you are, you are right, Craig. There are generational divides. You know, there, there are various, and the state to their credit is starting to keep kind of cross-tab data on subsects of folks so that we can start to drill down on like, okay, well, what are things we could do? Perhaps we should look at approaching the interfaith community, right, and having a vaccine fair with some religious leaders, and that's something I'm gonna be looking at in the coming weeks and and see what what might make sense there. And and going to trusted community members to partner with, right? You know, if somebody doesn't know me from a whole while, I'm like, well, but I've given seventy-five covid updates to the board. That's not gonna make them change their mind on getting vaccinated. Trust is doing it. And you know, that's, that's what a lot of research has shown, is that folks listen to their doctor their friends and family. What I say is, you know, my feelings aren't hurt. I know, you know, I understand.
And they're, and they're bartended, so just saying.
Well.
Might have another approach here, good economic development.
I would. So, so, so Shot and a Chaser is a program in some of the states in America where fun is not by default illegal. You know, Massachusetts has some pretty stringent laws on alcohol, we'll say. So, but we, we, we are thinking, you know, we're trying to think globally about what our our options are for folks. So I am aware of some of, I think Colorado and New Jersey, and they have some fun stuff going on, like Beer Garden, Shots. So, you know, whatever, to, you know, to Craig and Mark's point, whatever we can do to continue to make it as easy as possible for folks. You know, we're not outright opposed to it, but.
I don't have any comments in that vein, but at one point, Connor, I think you mentioned like, what what do we do going forward with the updates? And I, I do think at this point, we can maybe go down to once a month or every other meeting. Your updates have been absolutely outstanding, extremely thorough. It leaves absolutely no question. I, I know that you and your team work exceptionally hard on them and have been working hard on them for over a year. So I'm extremely appreciative. The town is, it's been an incredible service that you've provided to the town. So please don't take that offensively. I just think that we're moving out of things, and we can, you know, do it once a month.
Jamie?
No, no, no questions. Thank you. You, Michael, the team, great job.
Jen?
No, thank you so much. This was a really positive update, and it's great to see the trends are moving in the right direction. As far as the cadence of updates go, I agree, monthly is probably good, and I probably wouldn't go any less than that. And also just put the caveat there for any special updates and whatnot, because obviously, this is a moving target. You know, I think we're doing the right things and and progress is happening, but you know, we're still living in a world of unknowns. And as people travel to parts of the country or out of the country where things may be different, or certain variants that are starting to take hold, you know, things, this is a, this is a still a changing landscape. So I'm bracing for what could be a clunky fall, but hoping that I'm totally wrong. So I think monthly with the caveat of special updates is the right approach for now. And thank you, these updates are so thorough. And I thought they really give a solid setting for understanding the current situation at multiple levels, which is really important. So thank you.
I appreciate that. I owe a huge thanks to Mike, who is off camera, but keeps the place running and pulls most of the data together every, every single time. So thank you to him.
So I'd agree, you know, using your judgment, if something comes up that's, you know, really a hot topic, we'll certainly include it. But for the most part, you know, I don't think you have to go as strict of a PowerPoint tracking, you know, comparison to the last time and so forth. I guess one thing that I do want to kind of mention is that we've all had experienced, you know, incredible trauma one way or another over this past year, and so have our kids and our friends and the people that we work with. And I would say, you know, just be really patient with each other and with the places that you visit. If you go into a restaurant and they are short-staffed because, you know, right now, there's a problem finding people to work there, or any of the service companies that you use, anticipate that when you go in, that you might need to be a little bit more patient. Your service might be a little bit slower. And remember to, you know, let these businesses know, congratulations, you've made it through the other end. We want to support you, tip them well. You know, be really generous in your patience with them and your gratitude, because they've been through, you know, an incredibly challenging time. They've had to pivot in many different ways to keep their businesses going. And hearing some of those stories that, you know, Mark and I are privy to through the Easton Outside Group, it, it's really been a tough go for them. So I would just ask everybody to, you know, have a smile, be a little patient. Your honey hots might be a couple of minutes late, but they're still gonna be warm when you get them. And, you know, get out and really take advantage of shopping locally, dining locally, and experiencing the, the, all of the outdoor things that Easton has. So that's my Easton Outside pitch. How'd I do, Mark? All right, great. Well, thank you very much for that update, Connor. Do you have anything else to add for Town Administrator Notes?
I do not.
Okay, Select Board Notes?
Give a shout out to.
Give a, a shout out to to the veterans in town. Jamie and Jen and I had the privilege of being at Memorial Day service at the VFW Hall because of rain outside. And that Corey and the veterans groups did an outstanding job. And they brought in a guest speaker. Turns out I, I've known the family for, I don't know how many years. But they, but Brian Donahue and the Donahue family, he came in and he, he blew me away. I remember this kid when he was a ball boy for the district soccer team my son played on. And he's now, as of next Saturday, a full Colonel in the, in the Army and he's, he's got a resume. I think that Corey went on for, I don't know, fifteen minutes with all the kudos and whatever, all the awards he's won and the things he's done. And I thought that the whole day was well done. And I appreciated the opportunity to be there and to, to speak to, to the group. So that's, that, that's what I have to, to say for for my select board notes.
Thanks, Craig. Mark?
Great, quick. Shop local, buy local. Support your local economy. Eastern outside.
There you go. Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to kind of piggyback Craig and say that it was a real honor to be able to give the Memorial Day proclamation. And turns out that I've been friends with soon to be, but Lieutenant Colonel Brian Donahue's brother. And I had no idea. So a very humble family. And one of the things that was read off was the eight deployments he's done overseas. So he's been in every theater you can imagine and multiple times for some of them to include Iraq, Afghanistan, Korea. And we'll be going back to Korea. But he spoke about, you know, there've been twenty-two suicides close to him over his twenty-year career and he just brought to light and talked about one of his NCOICs, which is Non-Commissioned Officer in Charge. And then he talked about two other close friends of his who were killed in action. And I think that's, you know, my children are there and I just, it was such a wonderful opportunity for them to experience what Memorial Day is all about and to hear it from someone who gave it in such an eloquent and emotional way too, very emotional for him. I think emotional for all of us that were there. And very much needed in this time when we often think of ourselves first, me, myself included. It's really nice to think about that ultimate sacrifice that these men and women have made and someone that's been so close to that for the last twenty years.
Thanks, Jamie. And thank you for reading the proclamation that day. I wasn't able to make it this year and I really appreciate you and Craig stepping in and we always want to, to have, if we have a veteran on the board, have a big role in that. That's something that Chuck used to do. So I'm glad that you were able to do that and to bring your family to experience it. It's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you. It was a real honor.
Jen?
So yeah, just to echo what Craig and Jamie both said, it was a really beautifully, beautiful but somber event that, you know, at times was really kind of hard to hold back the emotion. And that also, that point struck me as well, Jamie, how he brought attention to remembering those who've served but have, have struggled with the after effects of their service and the importance of honoring them and respecting what they did. So that, that really was impressed upon me as well. And I also just like to give props to the entire town. All your staff, Connor, for a great job done at town meeting. It was really well executed and, and, you know, it just, again, it's such a weird situation being in a large event with spacing and distancing, but as, as we've seen, you know, now a couple of times, it was done really, really well. So great job.
Great. And I just wanted to kind of go back again to our statement of diversity and inclusion. And also just to mention, you know, nationally, we don't really talk about things specifically nationally, but Juneteenth is coming up and that is a Saturday, the nineteenth, and it's the first time that Massachusetts has had that as a holiday. And I didn't really know what that meant. I thought it was the end of slavery, but I just wanted to read this little paragraph here. Juneteenth is short for June nineteenth marks the day when the federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas in eighteen sixty-five to take control of the state and ensure that all enslaved people be freed. The troops' arrival came a full two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation. Juneteenth honors the end to slavery in the United States and is also considered the longest running African-American holiday. So I always thought Juneteenth meant the day that slavery was abolished. Two and a half years later, it still wasn't abolished and, and that's really pretty profound, I think. And the other thing is that this is Pride Month and want to make sure that we mention that as well. As part of the work that our Human Rights Committee does, they talk about all of these issues and recognize them locally. So thanks to the Human Rights Committee, Raising Multicultural Kids and all these groups that continue to bring these positive issues and messages of inclusion, diversity and equity to the forefront. So on that, I will take a motion to, oh, wait a minute, we, I almost forgot the minutes.
And, and actually, Dottie, one thing I did remember, if I could, just for the board's benefit of the public, under Administrator Notes. I, I believe Mark or somebody on the board brought up earlier this year that I was being considered for and appointed to a state Legislative Task Force on PFOS in the Commonwealth. And so that has gone through. And its first hearing was last week. I was pleased to learn from Dottie that they're televised or they're available on the state website. So that, that task force is composed of nineteen members of folks from a broad array of disciplines, many medical folks, experts, epidemiologists, reps from DEP, DPH, the Attorney General's Office. And I am the representative for municipal government from the Municipal Association. So it's a lot of work led up by Rep Hogan and Senator Seer and excited to be a part of it. And the, the proceedings of that are public for anyone who is keeping track of what's obviously an important environmental regulation issue. The next meeting will be ten o'clock on Tuesday, the fifteenth. And they'll generally be at ten on Tuesdays moving through the summer. The committee is responsible for submitting a report to the legislature by the end of this year. So.
Congratulations.
Link of that. I'd love to, to watch how that goes down.
I was watching it. That's how Connor didn't know it was live.
I was, I was pleasantly surprised though. I mean, we're so used to everything locally being televised.
My self-standing congratulations again, and I'm glad that they chose you because they couldn't have chosen anyone better.
It's an impressive list of people that are on that committee and Connor is the only municipal official on there. So that's out of all the, all the communities in the state to be selected for that is pretty good. So thank you very much for serving on that, Connor. Next, we have the general minutes. We have a few of them here, dated December twenty-first, twenty twenty, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, January thirteenth, February eighteenth, March eighth, April fifth, April twenty-sixth and May third. So did anybody have any of those that they would flag any kind of changes or edits or catch any typos?
There was one, there was one edit that I, that I sent them to Mike Blanchard. I don't remember what, what the date was. But he, he recorded it.
Clarify that so the board knows that they would be voting on an amended set.
Yeah, I don't remember what date it was. Mike does.
Hi, hi, it's Michael. I sent an email earlier to you with the corrected version. It was March eighth. The only change was under item number four. Dottie, the minutes reflected, Dottie referenced a million dollar savings, but in fact it was ten million dollar savings. So we added a zero.
Goodbye, Greg. Could always count on Chuck to find a couple. He was a grapefruit reader. Okay. So with that, if there's no other changes or comments, if we, if, can we accept these minutes as a slate, Connor, as referenced in the packet with the amended March eighth minutes?
You may.
So moved.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes?
Debbens, yes.
Casey, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. So I think we're going to have to move the minutes up to the, to before the notes because I always forget those at the last minute. So with that said, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes?
Debbens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks so much, everyone. Have a great night.
Stay safe, everybody. Talk to you later.
Good night.
Good night.